Welcome to the zoning board meeting for June 17, 2020. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the meeting law, GL Chapter 38, Section 20 relating to the 2020 Noble Coronavirus Emergency 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 Congregation. A public access to this meeting shall be made utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. The software will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the chair via the Raise Your Hand function. The meeting will be recorded for future broadcasts by Norfolk Community Television. Please note, to attend this meeting, please sign in using your first and last name. If you wish to ask a question or provide comments, please use the Raise Your Hand function available when you click on your name or on the arrow at the bottom of the screen next to participants. If that doesn't work, you can wave your hand frantically in front of the screen and either Rich McCarthy or Amy Brady will recognize you. Tonight, we have one public hearing, a continuance of the 194 Main Street Comprehensive Permit, continued from 5:20, 2020. At this time, I will accuse myself and turn the meeting over to Vice Chairman Mike Caliza to continue. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question?
Nearly.
Or make a comment? We have somebody with an unrecognized name waiting to join. If we could just take a minute to have them rename themselves.
Is that the Oompa and Umi?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we have, whoever is here named Oompa and Umi, could you please identify yourself? You were on mute. If you could unmute yourself or actually.
Robert.
I'm sorry, Robert. I don't know what you want to do.
If they can't identify themselves, remove them from the meeting. Okay.
Oompa and Umi, can you identify yourself?
I'm trying to do that. My name is Robert Nowak, N-O-W-A-K.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Amy.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Okay. Mike, take it away.
Mr. Chairman, thank you and good evening, everyone. Excuse me. Tonight, we would like to, first of all, spend the first 20 or 30 minutes answering questions from the previous meeting. We ran out of time, and so we'll devote 20 to 30 minutes at the beginning of the meeting to answer some previous questions. The bulk of tonight's agenda will be dealing with the waivers and any other loose ends. And I think thirdly, the goal that we as a board have in mind tonight is to try to close the public hearing, if not possible, and keep moving the process forward. Before we begin with the questions from the last meeting, Mr. Cuglieri has requested that you read a letter into the minutes, and Mr. Cuglieri will read his letter, and the board will take this up at a later date when we do our deliberations. So Al, if you'd like to read the letter that you submitted late this afternoon, feel free to.
Thank you, Mike. Excuse me. Task, please find a request for a refund of fees previously paid, excuse me, previously overpaid to the town of Norfolk and Dan Hill's architect background. Prior to formally submitting the 40B comprehensive permit, I assembled a team consisting of a civil engineer, an architect, a land use attorney to assess 194 Main Street and develop a conceptual plan. After simultaneous discussions with the town planner, the ZBA, fire chief, it was determined that a 72-unit apartment building was warranted at 194 Main as the property is located 1,000 feet from a commuter rail platform. At our first conceptual meeting at the town, at the Norfolk Town Hall, it was discussed that the 72-unit, over-55 apartment building would help get the town to goal of 10% affordable housing. And my team left with instructions to move to the conceptual plan, apartment plan, build from the rear of 194 Main Street to the front, move the building, leaving space for parking in the rear. The excitement was obvious in the room, and we agreed to move the building, produce and produce another conceptual plan, was told to go with it. I did just that, to the tune of over $100,000 in civil design, architectural design, lawyering, consulting fees, and application fees. At our first meeting, the ZBA board asked myself and my team to remove the over-55 designation. We complied, and the change resulted in a reduction in the units from 72 to 60. Many meetings later, after reducing the project, a demand was made to incorporate Dan Hill's architect, who burnt $7,500 without any itemization or backup of services that were rendered, just a couple of bills stating amount due and additional lunch bills. Previous to that, I was led to design a 10,000-gallon deiseptic system for the 60-unit building for a cost of $15,000. That design was tossed in the trash two meetings later, as it was apparent that there was no longer an appetite for an apartment building. I sent my team back to the drawing board, and a 36-unit project with a mix of townhouses was presented to the ZBA. I presented, I was presented a $60,000 bill from my design team for the work, which I have to say is beautiful. Mitigation. I have mitigated 194 Main Street from 72 apartments to 60 apartments, finally down to 32, 36 townhouses, suffering great financial loss. Please understand, I am not a 40B developer, but a person who purchased this blighted property in the center of town with the focus on beautifying it for the benefit of the town of Norfolk and also my family. I've held this property together for three-plus years, losing money monthly to get to the final product. The loss of income during the pandemic has made, has only made this investment even worse. The value of my aim bringing to the tax table, tax table, excuse me, table tax-wise with this project will be in the vicinity of $300,000 per year to the town of Norfolk with little impact on the schools, as 90% of these units will be one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. In the meantime, excuse me, in the time of a pandemic, this project will be a great financial resource to the town budget. Refund, $7,500. I am requesting a return of the architect fees, as there was no distinguishable service rendered and no accounting of those services and details of tasks performed. $8,500. I am requesting the return of a portion of the application fees, as the project is 36 units, and the fee calculation should be half of the original 72 units that was paid to the town of Norfolk. Also, please consider deduction in water connection fees along with discounted building permit fees for the affordable units. Summary, I am asking the ZBA to consider my substantial mitigation, along with the $300,000 in new taxes, while also considering the costly project changes that could have been avoided if clarity had been given to me the property. I am asking for an approval vote on this project tonight, as I am out of money. Finally, I would like to say that after participating in this 40B process, I have known to realize that US members deserve the utmost respect for the time you give to the town of Norfolk and its citizens. I don't know if people realize how much time you guys put in. I do. Thank you for the consideration.
Thank you, Al.
Welcome.
Thank you for putting, we'll include this in the record, and we'll be discussing this and deliberating and at the time of deliberations. All right. The next, the next item on the agenda is to try to pick up where we left off at the last meeting. I'd like to suggest that we allocate between 20 and 30 minutes to answer some questions from the last meeting, then jump into the waivers, and there were a lot of waivers to get through tonight, so we have a lot of heavy lifting to get done. I believe, Amy, that Mr. Henry submitted a question via email after the last meeting. I'm not sure exactly what he means, but I'll read this, and then he can elaborate if you're here, Mr. Henry. For the next meeting for Al's project, Chris wants to know the height difference from the front sidewalk to the top of the stairs. Chris, are you in attendance tonight?
I thought he was. Yeah, Martha and Chris, they're muted.
Martha and Chris, can you hear us?
Oh, sorry. We were having Wi-Fi trouble, three kids. I think we've addressed it. So are we starting with the questions?
Yes. Yeah, we're going to devote about 20 to 30 minutes to questions at the beginning of the meeting tonight.
Okay, perfect. I appreciate that. Do you, Chairman, want to go through the questions, or do you just want me to go through my notes?
Well, let's start with, I think either you or Chris submitted an email asking to know the height difference from the front sidewalk to the top of the stairs. So if you want to elaborate on that question, and then we'll get through as many other questions as we have time for.
Okay. So we just wanted to know how, what is the height difference from the bottom of that stair to Main Street to the top? What's the elevation? Sorry.
This Greg Serroni, the architect? It's approximately six to seven feet.
Okay, thank you. And then our, the next question that I think is from Amy's notes is about the connection from the sidewalk in the development to Main Street and whether, which one will be ADA compliant? Are we able to see the plan?
Amy, would you like for me to share the plan?
Yeah, that'd be great, Jamie, if you could do that. Rich, you're on mute.
All right. Yeah. Thank you, Jamie.
Great, thank you. So which, so there are like three, it connects in three places on Main Street, and to work here is which one will be the ADA compliant connection?
Or how many?
Or are all, are they all required to be ADA compliant? Just because of that slope and grade change you have there.
Did you want to address this, Greg?
I'm trying to look at the, what we have for elevations. There are no accessible units, private sale units like this are required, so I'm not...
What would happen if a person who required that after they moved in, they can't access Main Street? That's not a requirement?
Well, the units, no handicap units for sale.
Okay.
I'm trying, I can't zoom in, so I can't tell what the grades are, Jamie.
Oh, I'm sorry. It actually, it appears that this first, this first access will probably meet ADA requirement, and there's a decent chance that the second one will as well. The one with the set of stairs will not meet ADA for ramp slopes. But again, with our final civil design, we'll have spot grades showing if there needs to be any level areas for rest, also that it doesn't exceed the maximum slope or span.
That's great. We were just looking to make sure that there was at least one, if not more, it sounds like ADA accessible, you know, like a way to be able to make that connection. Thank you.
Sure. If I follow this contour over in here, this is a 229 right here, and we have a proposed grade of 229 in here. This, this appears to be extremely flat, so I think that we'll be able to get something, something definitely in here. As this is kind of going uphill, this is 230, we got a 228 over in here. This might be a little more challenging with the 229, but this may also work. But I believe you'll, you'll find this meets it.
So, so my question would be, does it make sense to make the one to the left closer to the, the curb of the driveway to sort of extend that sidewalk out? And then that way, people that were accessing from the rear of the property or from the front would all have a, you know, easy grade to, to make that approach to the sidewalk?
Do you mean over on this side?
Exactly. Thank you.
We, we have a sidewalk all the way up on the side here now.
Yeah, that was correct. Yeah, that was my only question, is like, does it make sense to just sort of, instead of that sort of turning and running in front of the building, does that make sense to make a connection there versus, versus like, and it could even be an either/or of like, why do we need the steps if we could do it without it at the other side?
Sure, the step, well, the steps are, are over here, and I think we were asked to add in additional steps for easier access on these rear units over here? And please, anyone jump in if I'm wrong on that?
Yeah, so I agree that the one all the way to the right, that's marked by the retaining walls and steps, that certainly makes sense to make a connection from that side.
Okay.
And my argument would be, maybe we could lose that one in the middle, and we could make that, and swap that for the one all the way to the left where the driveway is, so that you're sort of connecting the left side of the property from one end and the right side of the property from one end, and then you've got another one in the middle to meet those front properties. Just makes easier acts, exactly, right through there, shorter, less expensive, and better access with less of a grading issue that you run into when you run, slide down to the, the ED2 VA3, one in the middle in front of the blue building.
Yeah, I, we would definitely, we can look at that. I, I'm not sure that it's easier for the simple fact that we have a transition area with the, the indicating strips over in here, we would also have to transition while also trying to maintain the gutter line flows in the road here.
That makes sense. Yep.
But it, but it, it's something that can be looked at. That, that would be, that, that would be a challenge, that, yeah, that's, I would have to think about that.
Yeah, well, it kind of comes in on the ADA tactile warning, you'd have to do like a curb ramp.
You would. It would be.
When they're double like that, it can become a tripping hazard.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's what's sort of hard to understand from a plan, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Chairman, I think we, we had some questions about the sidewalk mitigation that we'd like to ask, but I just, just, could you recollect for everybody else on the call where the board stood at the last meeting about sidewalk mitigation for this project?
I can answer that question, Mike. There is no sidewalk mitigation.
Right. Right. There's not included in this plan.
Okay, is there, can you, can you articulate why that's not, why that would be a benefit to the town to not have sidewalk mitigation?
Because there are sidewalks already in front of the building.
Right, but sidewalk mitigation isn't about that for the town of Norfolk, it's about the town of Norfolk.
It's exactly about that. That's exactly what sidewalk mitigation in the town of Norfolk is.
What?
Either you build the sidewalks if you don't have them, or if you don't want to build them, then you place money in a sidewalk mitigation fund. When sidewalks are already in front of the building, there is nothing for the developer to do. It's not, it's not, the bylaw is not for extortion.
No.
Al, come on now!
So, no.
All right. Martha, I think what we'll do, we've heard your concern, and we've noted it, we'll discuss this during our deliberations. Your point is well taken, the board has heard your concerns, and the proper place for us to discuss is at the deliberative part of the process. And your next question would be?
We are interested in the discussion around the tree caliper. That was kind of brushed last time, and I believe there's a request to have a much smaller tree caliper.
Well, and, no, I think that the comments were that they were, that, that smaller caliper trees had a better success rate on extreme slopes. And obviously, the front portion of this green space here in the front has a pitch that has to be dealt with, so I have absolutely no problem with saying, hey, that's the area where those calipers should be reduced, but I don't see the argument in the rest of the property that doesn't face that same hardship.
We've addressed this comment previously. Bill McGrath was in agreement with my team. I thought this was secured. I think that we're just going backwards, you know, when, when people don't like the answers, you know, just keep asking the questions till you get the answer you like.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, I think we did agree with the smaller caliper trees, as we talked about, on the steeper slopes. And I think those were, if I remember, one and a half to two-inch caliper trees?
That's correct.
But I, I think the discussion was that on the flatter areas, a larger caliper tree, maybe two and a half to three inches, would be appropriate.
Yeah. Bill, and Al, that's my recollection, Al. I think everyone's in agreement on those steeper slopes, and I'd like the rest of the board to weigh in, that we, we agreed that the smaller caliper would be fine on the steep, steeper slopes, on the flatter areas, the two and a half to three inch would be appropriate. Don, can you weigh in, and then Joe?
Yeah. I, I'm okay, I'm okay with that. I believe, I just want to make sure that temporary root waters, I can say that, root waterers are usually a good way to mitigate or to enhance the opportunity of larger caliper trees to live, driving down a standard three or four-inch drainpipe or PVC to allow water to get down into the roots in areas where there's a lot of impervious soil. But as far as, I guess, this pitch is, how, how much is this pitch? Jamie?
I'm trying, I, I estimated it to be somewhere around three to one.
Okay. I, I don't have any issue with a smaller caliper tree on a three-to-one pitch, if that makes sense.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Joe?
I'm okay. I agree.
Okay. Devin?
I agree. I thought that was fine. I remember talking about it pretty, I think we had a pretty lengthy conversation last meeting about it. It was a pretty long night, so hard to remember exactly every conversation, but...
Tim, in an effort to try and keep this meeting as short and sweet as we can, the last comments that I would like to make are regarding the bonds and the permit fees, and I'll make the same argument that I made the last meeting, which is, I agree with Al, that many of the fees and many of the permitting processes that we go through are onerous, you know, difficult to swallow. But they are what they are, and I think waiving those fees sets a dangerous precedent. I also have the same argument when it comes to the bonding. Now more than ever, I watched the planning board meeting last night as an example, where there is a developer that did the Frederickson Road project, and they're having trouble getting that project closed out, from landscaping to a variety of issues that are going on there. And turns out, the bond isn't adequate to be able to say, hey, we're just going to pull it and say, we'll take care of it. So in turn, we're forced into this situation of trying to, to fix it after the fact and be nice, and, and I just don't think that we put ourselves in a, in a good negotiating point down the road if we waive those bonds and those permit fees. I would be comfortable saying, on the affordable units, that there should be some sort of waiver there, but certainly not across the board.
All right. Thank you. Tim and Joe said, we didn't mean to cut you off, but on that discussion on the trees and the pitches, Tim, if you wanted to weigh in?
I sense that the trees being smaller caliber up front, larger on the other areas, I just want to make certain, does it make, does it make a lot of sense to have the larger caliper trees in the rear? I just forget the abutters situation out there, that's all.
Okay. Thank you. Josie?
I was thinking about also the trees in the rear. Would that be, I'm not sure about the abutters, but I think our largest abutter would be the train tracks, right? Because that's in the rear.
I, I believe it's the walking path.
And it's 36 new buildings on 25 Rockwood Road. It's an entire neighborhood.
Okay, and Rockwood Road as well. Looks congested, but an improvement from before.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Josie. I, I think the consensus is that the smaller trees on the steeper slopes would make sense, and some logic alper, two and a half to three inch, and on the flatter areas would be an appropriate way to go. And then finally, in terms of the, the fees and the bond, Don, if you want to weigh in on that, I'd like to get a consensus or some idea of what the board is thinking of. And specifically on the, the question, the request from Al was to reduce the fee on the affordable units, and, and then the bond issue as well.
Well, I, I figured we'd tackle the bond issue later, but as far as, I didn't, I thought we'd tackle the fees as, when we get to the waivers, but if you want to tackle it now, Mike, that's fine.
No, Dan, is that going to be included? Are the fees included in the waiver discussions?
Yeah, they are.
Okay. Well, yeah.
Does that include prior fees, Dan, for refunds?
There, there is a request for a refund in the waivers.
Okay.
Okay. Those, yeah. Plus, those would be conditions, not waivers. So when we get to the conditions portion of the meeting, we'll, we'll get into a deeper discussion of the fees and the bond. Okay. Martha, any other questions? Chris, any other questions?
No, I think that's it. And I do want to thank Al for the fence across the back of the property, because as I walk the path, I think that will look really nice, and we are looking forward to this project, Al. I know you've gone through a lot with this, and we appreciate, and I think it's going to look beautiful.
Yeah. I certainly appreciate you really being flexible and coming with so many different designs. It's been quite an evolution.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other folks on the call tonight that would like to ask a question? We've got about five or 10 minutes left for questions.
Peter Chipman. Yep. Peter, you can go ahead. Oh, I'm, well, I'm you.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question. Are we still in redesign phase of this project? I, I mean, there's things being thrown out there of changes, and as far as I know, this was started about 20 years ago. This, I, I thought this project was close to finalization, not still talking about where to move sidewalks and regurgitate about trees and everything else. I, I'm shocked at the amount of time that has been spent, and I watched this until the closing at the last meeting, much like everyone else that's here. I'm just questioning, you know, some of the funds transfer at the town meeting based on legal fees, whether this is adding to it.
I'll try to respond to that, Peter. I think we've got abutters and folks in town that are very interested in this project. We ran out of time at the last meeting, and so at the last meeting, we said we'd entertain some questions at the beginning of this meeting. We've just done that, and so I don't think there's any intention to redesign the project. I think the board feels very comfortable with it. It's part of our process to take testimony and gather information, and so we look at this as taking testimony and gathering information rather than designing the project. Are there any other questions or comments before we move on?
Not at this time. We'll watch carefully.
Let's jump into, before we do that, Glenn Fontecchio submitted a letter today. Amy, has this been entered into the record, the letter that we got from Glenn?
No, it hasn't. I'm not sure that it was circulated earlier.
Okay. I'd like to enter this into the record. I'd like to enter this into the record. And I don't know if, has it been posted on the town website yet?
No, no, I can do it tomorrow.
Okay. So, yeah, let's get this posted on the town website and get Glenn's, it's his summary of comments entered into the record as well. All right. Let's begin now. Dan, do you want to start with the, with the waiver process?
It's up to you, Mr. Chairman. I think it makes sense to start going through the waivers. We, we went through the decision at the last meeting. We covered a lot of ground with the conditions. This afternoon, I circulated a revised draft of the decision, which reflects in red lines the changes that were made at the hearing. The focus of the interim period has been on the waiver list. I took the requested waivers that were submitted, over 100 waivers. I don't think I've seen a project in Norfolk that's asked for that many waivers. So that, that took a while for me to, to put those into a table, the tabular format that we, that we customarily use for our decisions. So that's, that's what I've done. I, I believe that Amy has that and, or Rich, and you guys could probably put that on the screen. And we could go through it line by line and ask the applicant to explain the need for, for waivers as we go through it.
Okay. Let, let's do that. And again, let's, you know, I, I'd like to keep this part of, part of the process moving. We don't want to cut corners briskly if possible. I mean, our end goal tonight is to finish before 1:00 a.m. and hopefully close this public hearing. So with that in mind, let's, and I should say- Mike, can I just say something, please? One more thing, Al. I think the applicant came prepared to discuss the waivers. I think they've done a good job responding to our request for information at the last meeting. So kudos to Al and his team in, in pulling together this information. Yes, Al, go ahead. I just wanted to point out, and I think you probably just alluded to that, that we've had some expensive, extensive time with Bill McGrath and Rich McCarthy, going through the waivers and revising things that they want to change. So, you know, I mean, probably to the tune of about four to eight hours on, on Zoom meetings. So I'm thinking that this should be pretty seamless with respect to civil engineering and Rich McCarthy as, as the planner. Okay. Thank you, Al. Okay. Dan, let's, let's start.
Okay. Rich, can you actually put the waiver list on the screen? All right. So I, I put these in order, in, in the same, same order that we, we use for our other projects. So they aren't in the order that the applicant had given us, but I, the applicant had actually identified or labeled each request with a number, one through 100 something. And so I put those numbers in the left column. Can you scroll down, Rich, a little bit to the next page, too? So you can see on, on, on that first row, so the, in the far left column is the, is the bylaw section that we're, that we're talking about. And right under that is a, is a number in bold, 88. That's the developer's request number. And then as you scroll over the, the title of the regulation, the description of the regulation that's being requested to be waived. And then the far right column is, is the action that the board would take that we, we can fill in once we get to that point. This is, as a reminder, the board doesn't need to make these decisions tonight. This is, this is, the, the point of going through this is to continue to receive input from the applicant and are experts on, on these issues such as Bill McGrath. So what I think might make sense is to go through these pretty quickly. We don't have to dwell on the ones that are, are standard. So for the, for example, the first request is the earth removal bylaw. Now, this is something that we've waived for all the other 40B projects. I, I assume there's not going to be an issue here waiving it for this project. So for those kind of requests, I would propose we just kind of go through them quickly. And if someone wants to jump in, a board member or Bill McGrath wants to jump in with a comment, just, just interrupt me. So again, the first one is earth removal. That's the general bylaw. They've asked to be, they've asked for that to be waived. And that, that's generally waived in, in our 40B projects.
And if I, excuse me, if I might interrupt, I'm not arguing about the, the waiver. I think Jamie was going to submit some earthwork calculations for us to review.
Yes. Yes, we will.
Just, just so the board's aware.
Is that going to happen before the hearing is closed? Or when, when is that going to occur?
We, well, we were going to submit the approximated cuts and fills when we have the design finalized or, or when we're submitting the finalized design.
Okay. So that'll be after the permit's been issued? Is that, is that okay, Bill?
Yeah, I think that's fine. I, what we've seen, I don't expect there to be a lot of earthwork involved in any case, brought into the site or removed. So.
All right. The, the next section is the town's stormwater bylaw. And, and what we, what we decided to do here is waive the bylaw, but apply the state standards. And, and at a prior meeting, the applicant has agreed that, that they will comply with the state stormwater standards. The applicant also stipulated that, that he would be okay with a post-permit review of the stormwater system in lieu of a review of the system during the hearing, which is what we ordinarily do. So that, that waiver decision wouldn't reflect that agreement from the applicant. Because at this stage, we don't have a drainage design. What we have is just concepts for where, where things will go. The next one is property stabilization bylaw. I think we're recommending that this be waived. We do have a condition in the permit, as we have with every other project, that requires a, a bond posted for property stabilization. If the property is left fallow, there's money there for the town to step in and stabilize the property. The next one is signs. Article nine of the general bylaws, a waiver has been requested from the bylaw to allow a sign at the entrance to the project. Ordinarily, when, when, when an applicant requests a waiver like this, they, they propose something. They propose what the sign would look like and what the dimensions are. So it's okay to ask for a waiver. It's okay to, to request that the board issue the permit, but we don't have anything to refute. So that, that's something where I'm not really comfortable waiving this. And, and I don't think the applicant has a plan yet for the sign, which is fine. But there would have to be a post-permit review and approval process of, of a sign. So I, I don't know if Michael Shaughnessy, do you want to weigh in on how, how you'd like to proceed with this request?
Yeah. On the, the landscaping plan, we show a location, and I believe it's outside of the site triangles. And, and that's effectively what we're looking for the, the board to approve, the location. Now, when we get the formal design, when we get the final design with our final plans and we have the sign ready to go, we will have it as part of our final approval package. And if, if at that time, we need relief from the zoning bylaw, we'll, we'll make a request for a minor change. And, you know, the, the board can address it at that time.
Okay. So are you withdrawing this request?
Sure.
All right. Moving on. Now we're going to jump into the zoning bylaw. The first provision is the use regulations. This is pretty standard stuff. It, this is the, the part of the bylaw that, that says what you can do in certain zoning districts. They're asking for a waiver to allow the project. That's perfectly reasonable, and we expect that kind of request. The next section is section D1E. And this launches us into a whole set of, of regulations that apply to the business district in the town center. So the first request is, is, has to do with the bylaw that requires that dumpsters be located in the side or rear, rear of buildings. And, and this actually is a topic that was discussed this afternoon with emails with the Board of Health agent. The site plan shows, I believe, two dumpsters, one that's towards the front of the site. At the end, actually, if you want to pull up the plan, Rich, do you have that handy?
Rich, I don't think this is going to be the current one.
No, it's really not. No, you're right.
Should be, I think, six, eight. Yeah, there you go. That's probably it.
Yeah, that'll work.
One here. And one here.
Yeah, that's right. So there's two dumpsters. And, excuse me, the, the Board of Health agent weighed in on this this afternoon. I, I think there's some need to be a little flexible as to making adjustments after, after the permit's been issued. There hasn't been a review of the dumpsters by, by the Board of Health as, as would typically happen during a conventional project, whether it's a subdivision or a commercial property. So there hasn't been, you know, that kind of analysis. And the solution that I discussed with Michael Shaughnessy this afternoon was that we'd have a condition in the permit that after the permit's been issued, but before the building, building permit is applied for, the applicant would propose the specifications and dimensions of the, of the dumpsters and, and enclosure areas. And that, that would be reviewed by the Board of Health. And there would also be a location shown for potential additional dumpsters if the waste stream that's produced by the project exceeds expectations. There would also have to be some accommodation, I think, for recyclable materials. I'm not sure what the plan is, if, if one's even been thought out at the stage in terms of, you know, what these dumpsters are going to look like. Are they going to be just trash? Are they going to include recyclables? So, and also, you know, what the pickup schedules are for, for the trash. So I think that can be handled post-permit if the applicant's agreeable to it. I drafted a, a condition late this afternoon, just, just kind of adding those requirements in there, that, that the applicant would, would be obligated to comply with any, any reasonable requirement of the Board of Health after the permits have been issued to make sure that the project is sanitary and complies with local regulations.
I'm fine with that.
All right. Moving on, Ben, is request number 54. Now we're on page five. Rich, this, this waiver requests relief from a few sections of the, the B1 district bylaw, the buffer greenbelt landscaping requirements. The applicant is, is asking for a waiver of this section in the entirety and to allow buffers that's shown in the landscape plan. What the, what the bylaw requires in this district are 30-foot buffers where, where the project abuts a residential property and a 15-foot row of trees along the property line. So that's what would be required. The project wouldn't comply with those standards because there are portions of the buildings and parking areas that are within 30 feet of the property line. You know, one factor to consider here is that the, the property that this project abuts is forest. It's, it's the, well, it's the Medway branch, I suppose. And there aren't any houses directly abutting this, this project site. And, and under the bylaw, the planning board has the ability to grant relief from the section anyway. So I think, and I think Bill McGrath was comfortable with this waiver, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah. You know, I think we are comfortable, subject to our final review of, of the plans. But I think the waiver makes sense since there is a, a landscape design associated with the project.
And there's also a substantial fence along that edge as well.
Right. Yeah, the back, back property line.
So the B1 section I, not D, the zoning bylaw, so I'm not getting the-
I, I think there are two sections, Rich, that, that regulate this.
Can I just ask which fence we're referring to? I'm just a little lost.
Which what?
Which fence we're referring to?
We're talking about the fence that you asked for at the last meeting along the back.
Okay, great. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure I was on the same page.
We can remove it if you'd like, Martha.
No, Al, I'm very excited about it. I'm even willing to talk about materials if you want to go that far. I'm just kidding, Al. I'm not trying to make you upset.
Al, I remember you were, you were actually for that fence in the back.
That was my John Kerry moment. I went before, before I was against it.
I'll remember it forever, Al. Thank you.
Six-foot razor wire.
Yeah. That's what's there, that's what is there now. Bobbed wire.
Yeah, I know.
So we do, just to clarify, so we, the D section doesn't apply to the B1. B1's got its own, but there are similar requirements. So we could just, we'll have to match up the sections.
Yeah. Well, D is what then, Rich? It's not the town center?
No, because D is, it's the B2 through B4, C2, C3, C5. So B1, B1 does have its own, it mimics these theme requirements, but it's a different section. That's all. So.
Section D is the general requirements. And later on in section I, it gets specific to the B1 district.
Yeah, but they don't, those general, it has its own specific requirements. They carved it out just for the B1. It's fine. We'll just, we can clean it up, but it's just-
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. So yeah, section D1E is buffer landscaping requirements in non-residential districts. So that what we're talking about is our, our requirements that would apply in a non-residential district where it abuts a residential district, which is what we have here. Okay. So is, is the board generally okay with this? And Mike, do you want to, do you want to poll the board on, on these issues at this stage? Or do you want to just fly, fly through these and we'll, we'll come back to it in deliberations?
Why don't we make a note of what the issue is and, and, and we'll deliberate these at that, at the appropriate time?
Okay. So I'm going to make a note of, of waiver issues that I think are more than just standard and boilerplate issues. I'm, I'm just going to put a star on my sheet, and then we can go back to them in deliberations. All right. All right. So the next one is D1E4. This requires 40 square feet of landscaping for each foot of frontage in the lot. This project wouldn't comply with that, but obviously there is a fair amount of landscaping proposed. The applicant is just asking for a waiver to allow for the landscaping they proposed. They, they haven't done a calculation of the amount of landscaping. I don't know if it's possible for Jamie to do that. If, if it's not too much effort, it might, it would be nice to have some basis for what the, what the waiver is for, like how much you're asking for a waiver from.
Sure, we can, we can provide that.
All right. Thank you. Subsection D2, again, going back to use regulations. And, and this is a, a regulation that, that stipulates what's allowed in the B1 district. So this, this should be waived. Now we're slipping to page six, watershed protection district. I'm not even sure if this site is in the watershed protection district. Do we know that it is for sure, Jamie?
No, we don't. I believe, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, we couldn't find the watershed protection district mapping.
Right.
Yeah, we, we looked, we've inquired, but we haven't been able to find it. Rich, were you ever able to find it?
Let me make a note. Let me make a note. I, yeah, I know where it is. It's, uh, but it's not in there. I'll get, I'll get the map. I'll send it to you guys.
All right, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, Peter Chipman, in the butter, the watershed protection district is not near this area at all.
Excellent.
Rich, is that map on the website?
No.
Is that something we could get on the website in, for future purposes?
There is a watershed protection district layout. I don't know if it's an official map, Devin. It's somewhere in these endless volumes of rules, regulations.
Somewhere, somewhere in there.
Okay, well, if we get confirmation that the site is not in it, we'll just, we, we can withdraw this, this request.
I, I was just going to say, I think Pete is most likely 100% accurate on this, so let's withdraw it.
Okay. Floodplain, wetland protection districts. Again, I'm not sure that this actually, is it within that district or not?
We're going to withdraw. This one is too dense. We'll withdraw it.
Okay. E1A intensity regulation. So obviously in your zoning bylaw, you have regulations that govern how much you can put on a lot, how many buildings, how many units. So that this would be waived. Section F1. All structures and buildings shall be constructed in conformity with the zoning bylaw. So that, that's a general waiver for 40B projects. F7A. This is a requirement for the planning board to make a decision. So I, this is actually not required to be waived because the zoning board is stepping into the shoes of the planning board for all purposes. So this can either be withdrawn or denied. It's, it's not necessary. Section X7E. This, this waiver would, would be necessary to allow parking in front of the townhouse units. So I'm assuming the Board's comfortable with that, but I'll put an asterisk since that's, that's a unique provision to this project. F7I, this would allow for parking spaces to be nine feet by 18 feet in dimensions. We've talked about this before, that, that's a little bit smaller than the town standard. And I believe the Board said it was comfortable with that, and I believe Bill McGrath was comfortable. We've got drive aisles that are 24 feet wide, so that provides some buffer. Again, stop me if anybody wants to talk about any of these. F7M, parking lots containing 10 or more spaces shall have at least one tree for eight parking spaces. There's some other requirements. All of this governs landscaping within parking areas. So they've asked for a waiver to allow for the landscaping that's shown in the plan. And I'm assuming the Board is okay with, with that. F7N. Parking lots shall be constructed in conformity with the rules and regulations of the planning board. This parking lot would not strictly comply with the planning board's regs, so they've asked for a waiver. We've gone through the design of the parking area, and so I'll check that off as, as, as good to go. F7O. Each parking space shall be marked and maintained with reflective white or yellow painted on each side. They're requiring, they're asking for a waiver. They want to just meet the mass. What is NUTCD, Jamie?
That's, that's, that's the guidance manual that highway departments follow.
It stands for Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. Sort of the national standard.
I was trying to take your thunder, Bill.
Oh, sorry.
So Billy, Billy, you okay with this?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm not sure it makes any difference. I think it's going to end up looking the same. I think the, the thing to be sure of is that they're actually striped and demarcated, so.
Okay, but, but the state manual has requirements that...
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
All right, page nine, we're at F8A. So this requires off-street loading facilities to be provided on the same lot as, as the buildings that are being served. It requires a, an area of 400 square feet for off-street loading. So a waiver is requested here. And, and this brings, brings up a point that, that I made in my memo last month, May 13th, which was a, just an overall kind of design concern that I had, that there, there aren't any designated loading areas or visitor parking spaces on, on the project site. There are parking spaces at a ratio of 1.6 per unit, which is on the low side for Norfolk. The Rockwood Road 40B project has four spaces per unit. And the, and, and this, this project site doesn't have any areas for temporary vehicle trips such as delivery vehicles, Uber drivers, moving trucks, things like that. So I, I discussed this today with Bill McGrath and, and with the Chair. So I just want to raise it again, it's just an overall concern that it would be better to have some dedicated areas on, on the site to have, go allow for those temporary vehicles to, to park. And I think given that, given the, the type of project we're dealing with, multifamily downtown project, I think people who live there are more likely to use delivery services for food and so forth. And so I think it, I'm just making that comment for, for the Board's consideration.
Devin, hang on one second. We're, we're not going to decide this tonight, but I'd like to hear, Bill, what are your thoughts on this in terms of the 1.6 and the designated loading areas? I wasn't privy to your conversation with Dan.
So in, in terms of the, the ratio of parking spaces, given the, the proximity to the rail station, I think we're comfortable that the ratio is a little bit lower than the, the town standard of, of two spaces per unit. In, in terms of loading, and, and we had the opportunity to discuss this with the applicant as well, I'm less concerned about food delivery, things like that. I, I think there'll be some open parking spaces where, where food delivery could, could pull in quickly to deliver food. And delivery services like FedEx, UPS, Amazon, they usually won't pull into a space.
Clear. What are you doing?
Out of a space. So they usually need a, a curbside parallel space. My only thought, I, I don't object to the waiver. My only thought maybe in the final design is there's an island sort of in the middle of the parking lot that maybe could be reconfigured a bit just to provide a, a length of parallel curb that could be signed to encourage delivery service vehicles to, to park there, to avoid them parking in the aisle. But overall, I, I hear Dan's concerns and I, I share them. But I think in, in this case, you can find just some space along the curb. Doesn't have to be the, the 400 square feet necessarily marked, but maybe just sign to encourage delivery service vehicles to, to stop there.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Bill.
Mike, can I say something real quick with that?
Sure, go ahead, Devin.
It's part question, part comment. So there's that area at, at the rear or right side where that fire truck can turn around? I guess, could, number one, could that be considered that area? But also, number two, did we talk about having that also potentially striped for no parking to? Okay, so it wouldn't at the end of the day?
Yeah, Devin, I, I think the, the state fire code prohibits any, any kind of loading or parking within a fire lane, and that would be a designated fire lane.
Okay, all right. That, that was kind of the second part of my question of will the final plans just address that, having some sort of signage or striping? So that, you know, i- if I was a delivery, delivery vehicle driver, I would probably park there myself, so.
So, but from a practical standpoint, I think that's probably true. It can't be signed that way. I'm not sure, again, that UPS, those vehicles want to pull in. They may be able to pull up sort of parallel to the entrance of that, that space. But I think if there's a moving van or something like that with people moving in and out, they could use that space. But it, it can't be signed as a, as a loading zone.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Peter Chipman has his hand up.
Sure, go ahead, Peter.
Real quick, Mr. Chairman, on the parking requirements, the 1.6 actually exceeds what is required in the, the B1 district, which is 1.5. As a matter of fact, there was consideration to give it down to one space, but the 1.6 actually exceeds existing zoning, just for your notification.
Duly noted. Thank you, Peter. Okay, let, let's move on.
Okay. Section F9, no freestanding signs shall be located near or any side property line that permitted by the side yard setback distance for that zone. So the applicant is, is proposing a, a freestanding sign at the entrance of the project, which we would expect in, in the, the location, I guess, is shown on, on the plan. Actually, since that plan is up, Rich, can you just put that on the screen so we can see where that location is? Because I didn't see that before. Could you zoom in on the entrance? Okay, so I think I, I think I see, see the sign on the left. All right, is, is the Board comfortable with that location? I don't object to it. Let's put it that way.
Okay. But it, it should be near where the driveway is. I, I guess my only question is, is can you see it going northeast on Main Street? You can certainly see it going southwest, based on the way it's angled.
Yeah, it's not, the bylaw doesn't require a sign. This, this is only for the, the project's own benefit. So I think it's something that the applicant would like to have a sign as, as helping to market the property.
Is when you put them purposely...
Is everybody comfortable with that?
I'm sorry, it's Greg's journey, architect. We angle them on purpose because when you put them at 90 degrees, they have a tendency to become impairment as you're pulling out.
Okay, that makes total sense. I withdraw my comment.
Mike, this is Joe. I mean, that makes sense, right? We have that in the front of some of the other projects assigned angled something similar, maybe built into a wall.
Okay. And any other comments from members of the Board? Hearing none, let's, let's move on, Dan.
Okay, so on, on this, on this issue, just like we had the other signing condition, we're going to have a, I'll put a condition in the decision that would require post-permit review and approval of the signed dimensions and materials and things like that, which, which the applicant has agreed to. Section F11, site plan approval requirements, those can be waived because we, we deal with that as part of the 40B process. F12, design review, same thing. We, we deal with that through the 40B process, and we, we did address those issues both for the 60-unit project as well as the 36-unit project. Section G2, building permits. So this section just says a building permit shall not be issued unless the project complies with zoning. Clearly, the project doesn't comply with zoning. That's part of the process. So the waiver would be granted to allow zoning non-conformities that are, that are allowed in, in the permit decision only. Section G3, occupancy permits. Again, same issue. They, they only can be granted for projects that comply with zoning. The waiver will, will allow for it to the extent that, that decision grants zoning waivers. Section G5, Mike and I, Mike, well, Shaughnessy and I discussed this today, and neither one of us, I understand what performance standards mean. Maybe if Mr. Chipman is, is listening, he could collaborate on this. I, I don't, I don't know what, we assume what these meant, what, what these refer to as section F10, which layouts and performance standards that are set forth in some national guidelines. So if that's the case, the applicant is okay with, with that, with the, with that section staying in.
Yeah, they're national.
You want to weigh in on that?
They are. They're national performance standards for site plans. They're more prescriptive numbers. That's what they're there for.
So section G5 is intended to refer to section F10. It just, it doesn't say that in section, but that, that's the intent?
Yes.
Okay. Next, next waiver is section H3, inclusionary zoning. This, this doesn't apply here because it's not an inclusionary zoning project. And now we get to section I4, which are specific regulations governing the B1 district. So the first one is I4A4. This requires a, a project to provide pedestrian ways and street trees. So developers asking for a waiver to allow what's being proposed on the site plan. Similarly, the, the next section, I4A5, requires that pedestrian ways and buildings be oriented in a certain manner. Applicant's asking for a waiver for that to, to allow what's being proposed in the plan. I4A6, this sets some, sets some limits on the height of buildings. So I think that the Board is comfortable with the height of these buildings. I asked a question. I, I don't know what the height is. I, I don't think we've got that information. I know it's on the, I know the site plans show the, the architectural plans, I believe, show the, show the buildings and, and their dimensions. But we don't necessarily know what the height would be as, as measured under the, under the zoning bylaw. That's perhaps something we could fill in.
Great, great information.
Though I, I, I don't, but I would say that, you know, reading the bylaw, the average grade that they measure from, it's a little, little confusing. And once, one manner it spoke about the height from the average grade to the mean height of the roof, which usually means, you know, you take the height of the, from the bottom of the roof to the top, and you measure in half. I think our height is 40 feet. Our building heights are around 37, measured from the grade. And that is measuring, you know, if we looked at the front of Main Street, as you move to the right, you know, the grade gets higher. So I, I would say, you know, we are well underneath that 40 feet. That is in the bylaw, based upon the average grade definition.
Thank you.
All right, so, so any Board members have any concerns with the height of the buildings?
Does this, does it require a waiver?
I think they're asking for a waiver, Joe, because the, the bylaw is not crystal clear as to how you measure it. And I, I don't blame them for asking for it because I think it, a lot of bylaws around the state are, are kind of confusing as to, you know, do you measure it from the, the average grade? Do you measure it from the existing or, or, or future grades? So I, I think it's, it's reasonable just to ask for the waiver, even if technically they may not need it.
Okay, and I don't have a, a problem with the heights that are proposed.
I don't have a problem either.
Neither myself. All right, moving on. Request number 79. This is I, I4A9. This requires design review for, for these kind of projects, so that, that could be waived here since the 40B process takes... here since the 40B process takes place of site plan review and design review. Request number 80, it's I4A10. This is street specifications, roads within the district shall comply with the town standards. This project is not a subdivision, these aren't these aren't going to be public ways, and the applicant is asking for a waiver from those standards. This can be granted, subject to the conditions of the permit, and it's subject to the other waiver decisions that we're going to go through when we get into the subdivision rules and Next section is I4A11. This pertains to the density within the B1 district. And so I'm assuming the board is comfortable with the density at this point, we've already gone down that road. Next one is I4B1A. This concerns any vehicle, parking areas, vehicle driveways, being set back 50 feet from any adjacent residential zone property. So that that is definitely an issue here, because the driveway and parking areas of the project are within some some portions of them are within 50 feet of the residential district that abuts the property. As we just discussed, the residential district that abuts the property is undeveloped, it's Medway branch and property behind site. So I'll put an asterisk just to note that that's something we should talk about at deliberations. Next section, I4B1B. So this this would this governs the outdoor storage of fuel, refuse, materials. So this this arguably applies to dumpsters. The it requires a fence to be erected to screen any outdoor storage of refuse and fuel. The enclosure area cannot exceed 1,000 square feet. So in talking to the applicant's attorney today, the dumpster areas are not going to be more than 1,000 square feet, they're probably much smaller than that. We will have a condition in the permit that will require a board to consult review of the trash management plan.
Dan, it's Mike. What about snow storage? Where were is there a place where we'll discuss discuss that?
I don't actually think there's a waiver on that one. I think we have a condition in the permit, but I think actually Jamie was going to show us on a plan where that's going to be provided.
Yeah, I will provide a snow storage plan, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, so I think we're down to now, request 84, I4B1C. So this this has a bunch of additional dimensional requirements, setback requirements. As Rich mentioned, these are similar to the ones in section D that we already covered, requiring a setback of 30 feet to residential districts, 15 feet of screening. So the request is to waive that for the project. The project is closer than 30 feet to the property lines, but they propose landscaping features and fencing to screen the property properties. Moving along, now we're on page 15. Request number 85. For each foot of frontage, the lot shall contain 40 square feet of landscaping unless provided by the planning board. So this mirrors the language of section D that we talked about already, they're asking for a waiver because the amount of landscaping is not 40 square feet per one foot of frontage. And I believe Jamie's going to give us a calculation of that.
You will.
Yes. Request 86. This is a provision that requires calculation of a build-to line, and this is specific to properties that are within the business core of the B1 district. It's a design standard, and the applicant is asking for a waiver to allow for the design.
Mike, I don't have these waivers on the screen anymore, is it just me?
Yeah, no, they're not on anymore.
Okay. Amy, dear, Rich, do you know what?
Rich, I don't know if you're frozen, but if you'd like, I can share my screen.
Okay, so you're not seeing them? I had them up, all right.
You know, we were we were seeing like one of your directories.
Oh, you might have been on, yeah.
Different screen, you moved to a different screen?
Well, I got kicked, so you don't see this right now?
Now we know. We got it, now we got it.
Okay.
All right, so I think we're on page 15. We're now on request number 87. These are the uses that are allowed in the B1 district, and the waivers requested to allow residential uses. The B1 district actually only allows residential uses that are part of a commercial site plan. So obviously, this plan is purely residential, which is not would not be allowed in the B1 district, but for this waiver. We're now at page 16, and this gets us into the planning board's rules and regulations. And just to provide some background here, the planning board rules and regulations govern subdivisions, it governs site plan review. This project is not a subdivision, and so these all these requirements in the subdivision regs do not technically apply to this project. The reason that we go through them is because we don't have a different set of design standards for these type of projects in Norpric. Most towns don't, and so under 40, the standard practice is to use these as a as standards that we look at to compare how the project complies or doesn't comply with those standards. So we will go through them as if they're waivers, but keep in mind, these these driveways will never become public ways, and so we aren't as concerned with these standards as we will with projects like 144 CCON. The first the first request, I talked to Mike, and that that can be withdrawn, it's a general blanket waiver about the whole thing, and it covers basically what I just said. The next one is impact studies, the applicant is asking for a waiver. They've provided some information already on impacts, and so that's that's generally okay. Next section, the general requirements and design standards under section four, yeah, that's fine to waive, subject to the conditions that we impose in the decision. The next section governs trees and tree plantings, and again, fine to waive it because we have conditions in the decision dealing with landscaping and trees. Page 17, section 4.10, requiring the staking of staking the sideline of the proposed walkways along the along the roadways at 50-foot intervals. And since the, again, this is not a road that's going to be accepted, if this was a road, it's important to stake the sidelines, there's no need to do it here. 4.12.1, trees prior to removal, any trees over four inches in diameter in the right-of-way, the developer shall mark all trees proposed for removal. I don't even think there are any trees proposed to be removed in the right-of-way. Can the applicant actually confirm that?
Well, it's it's difficult, because we don't have a clear and defined right-of-way. We have the access drive at the street, and then it goes back behind the building. There are some trees behind the existing building that would be in part of what we would consider the parking lot, so.
I meant Main Street.
Oh, no, no, we have we're not proposing any clearing in Main Street.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's what the intent of this was. Section 414.6, this pertains to the road width requirements and other dimensional requirements in the regs. They don't apply here because there's no roads to park a lot. Section 414, this regulates dead-end roads. Again, it's not a road, so we're not concerned. We did address, as board members may recall, that the issue with the driveway being longer than 180 feet, which I believe is the fire code standard for dead-end roads, and they addressed that by providing the turnaround area for fire trucks. Section 417, street cross-sections, this requires that cross-sections to be drawn at 50-foot intervals on on roads in a subdivision, since we don't have a road, that's not necessary And Bill McGrath, if you want to stop at any of these where you think we shouldn't grant the waiver, please, please just interrupt me.
I will.
All right. Section 418, walkways on existing roadways, this requires the staking of any walkways proposed on existing roadways, that's not being proposed here. Now we're going to stormwater management. There are a bunch of stormwater management provisions in the subdivision regulations, and I'm not going to go through each one. I think the the critical thing for the board members to understand here is that the project will be designed in compliance with the state stormwater standards, and that will be checked by our peer review engineers after the design plans have been prepared by Jamie and filed. So we have a really good set of conditions in the decision, requiring a set of final engineer drawings with hydrology calculations to be submitted to the board, those will be given to beta engineering to review to make sure everything is is in compliance with the state standards. So that I think we could skip over these requests, 15, 16, 17, and 18. Actually, just on number 18, Jamie, can you confirm, where is the roof runoff going to be directed? Is the roof runoff also going to be directed to the to the central detention basin or infiltration basin?
Yes, it is.
And that so that basin has been sized to be big enough to capture to store all of the roof runoff plus the driveway runoff, right?
Yeah, so we've been working on the on the drainage design and have it pretty much completed, and we're also like the last the last project, we're going to have a set of underground infiltration chambers up near the access drive down as well. But yes, the majority of the water is getting into the infiltration basin, including the roof runoff.
And that's an infiltration basin?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Jamie, the only question on that one, do you know if you're hitting that 1-inch recharge?
Oh, yeah.
The DEP regulations are, you know, half an inch for a site like this.
We're going way above 1 inch.
Okay, all right.
What? How much above?
Well, you have a half inch and a 1-inch, depending upon your situation with rapid soils or critical areas.
Holy mackerel, what's up? I like Devon's design flow. Half inch.
There's a lot more criteria than just that, Al.
Can we put I thought we were putting some of it towards the Henry's house.
All right, on request number 19, Bill, do you have any concerns with any of these requirements being waived? I know that some of these had to do with setbacks, the stormwater basin setbacks, the berms, the fencing around the ponds.
No, and a lot of these apply to publicly owned and maintained facilities in terms of access and the berm width for access. I think since this is a private site, and the way it's designed, there'll be access to be able to maintain it. The question about fencing around the basin, that was something that that was considered a requirement for a long time. A lot of designs have gotten away from that now, because there's more of a chance of trapping somebody inside the fence. So I think we would be fine. We haven't seen the final design yet from Jamie, but we probably wouldn't recommend fencing it, as long as it's designed to empty in the time that that it's supposed to empty. But but like I said, most a lot of these have to do with just being able to get in and maintain the basin and have access to it, so.
Okay. All right, so turning to page 20, the next section also has some setback requirements. This actually, I think, deals with subsurface drainage structures, and I didn't realize there were going to be any until Jamie just mentioned that. So you're going to have some subsurface infiltration chambers, Jamie, in the front of the site, is that right?
Yeah, it'll be it'll be in the entrance, under the pavement towards the entrance way. So I guess on the westerly side of the site, the southwestern side of the site.
Well, Jamie, will that be in about the same location?
Yes.
As it was in the the previous iterations?
Exactly, yep, and picking up the a very similar watershed, you know, that goes over to a point which is very flat.
Okay. The next one is unit numbering. We generally require the the fire chief and police chief to sign off on street names and numbers, so we just stuck that in there for their approval on that. And so that waiver would be would be denied so that the the town regulation would apply. Moving on to section 5.2.1, this goes to the road design standards and the subdivision regs. These require things like 26-foot wide pavement, 7-foot grass strip, et cetera. It's a private project, it's not a road, so these don't need to be applied here. The general specifications, I think, have already been provided. Actually, do we, Bill, do we know what the specs are for the pavement thickness and we?
I don't think anything's been provided yet.
Yeah, they're going to follow the same spec as on the previous design that you guys were okay with. We're not going to go with anything different, that that'll also be adequate.
Okay, and I think that was 4 inches of pavement over 12 inches of gravel, if I remember.
No, 4, actually, I think we had 4 and 1/2 inches of pavement over 6 inches of crushed stone and then 18 inches of gravel.
Okay. Jamie, was there a spec sheet on that prior plan that that you could give us that confirms that this will be applicable to this to this revised project?
Absolutely.
I feel like that's probably something we should have before we close the hearing. So is that something you could provide to us this week or next week?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, that's not a problem. We have that already together.
Okay, that'd be great, because I and what are we going to be getting? Are we going to be getting any more plans from you before we issue the decision?
I don't know when you're going to issue the decision, and and I guess that would that would kind of be up to Al as well.
Are we doing the decision tonight?
Well, it's not going to be signed tonight, we're just going through the waivers, and it's probably going to be another meeting of the board probably in a few weeks.
Another meeting? Are you kidding me?
So I don't think we need I don't think we need additional plans. I think just if we can get that spec sheet for the pavement, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'll get that over to you. It'll you'll have it either the Friday or the beginning of next week.
Okay. All right, so the next next one is 523. This is an earth relocation removal, permits required when there's movement of 550 cubic We don't, I don't think we're concerned about earth removal and cuts and fills with the site. The next one is request 25. This is a requirement of a submission of a certificate of compliance indicating the gradation source of driveway gravel-based materials. Since this is a private project, we're not as concerned about about those issues. But I believe the applicant or Jamie has met with Bill and Rich and discussed a what they called a site plan observation inspection forum that will cover issues like this, and it seems like everybody's in agreement as to what information is going to be provided to the boards, is that right? Um, and it seems like everybody's in agreement as to what information is going to be provided to the boards, is that right?
That's correct.
Yes, yes, that's right.
Jamie, do you want to just explain what this is, uh, to to those of us who may not see this every day and and what it is, what exactly does this cover?
Yeah, sure, so it it covers, um, it covers, I guess, the critical parts of instruction on what will be a private site. And what we did was we kind of went through their traditional take two form that the town has. And, uh, Richard, uh, Bill and myself, um, along with Al, went through and and decided what what needed to be looked at and I think we all came to a very good compromise. Including, uh, a progress as built after, I will, just prior to asphalt being placed. Showing structures, um, grades, locations of things to make sure that any potential errors are caught before pavement goes down.
Okay, and so that would apply to it looks like, uh, the next couple waivers. Uh, that was twenty-six, uh, request number twenty-seven, yeah, same thing, twenty-eight. So those issues will be captured by that agreed upon protocol for for site inspections and, uh, reporting. Um, request number twenty-nine, this this is a a design standard requiring, uh, slope granite edging. The the request is to waive that and to provide Cape Cod berm or no berm. And, uh, so so there would be a Cape Cod berm, is that right, when when the paved surface meets up with a a walkway?
Uh, no, that would, that would be a vertical granite curb, uh, that Beto was kind enough to provide us with. It's a continuous.
Sorry, Jamie, just to correct you, it's it's not vertical granite, I don't think, I think it was a
Vertical concrete? Oh, I'm sorry, did I say granite? I do apologize, concrete.
You just committed Al to putting in granite curb, so.
Yeah, no, 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 concrete.
Alright, so so we've got vertical concrete where the where the paved surface, uh, but say walkway.
Yes.
And and everywhere else will be a Cape Cod berm?
Correct.
Do we, do we want to, do we want to say anything about a monolithic berm, uh, for your, for your parking lot? Like, we've been doing that in in our other decisions, does it matter?
But I think, I think there'll be a detail on the plan showing that. What whether it needs to be in the in the decision, I don't know, but.
Okay.
That'll be on the spec sheet that gets sent, um, in the next few days.
Okay, alright, great.
Um, Dan, this is Joe, do we have to actually say on or no berm? Is it waive the use of a Cape Cod berm? I just want to make sure the wording is correct.
Yeah, Jamie, are are there any areas where there's not going to be any berm at all?
I do not believe so.
I think it's covered saying, as shown on the plans.
Yeah, that that's a good point, Devin. Um, you know, up against the garage base for the drive under, uh, there would be no berm. Yeah, so I I agree, Devin, I think probably as shown on the plan, because it's pretty clear, we have double lines and we can detail that out pretty well.
But we don't, we don't have that plan yet, right? We don't, we don't have a plan that shows that.
Oh, no, it's shown on, uh, the architectural plan that Greg has provided.
The berm is on the architectural plan?
Yeah, it's a double, it's a double line wherever there's a Cape Cod berm and a single line for the vertical concrete.
Okay.
I think the intent of this is understood.
Yeah.
I'm good, I'm good, I'm just checking the wording, that's all, I mean, obviously, if it's basically what's, you know, as is in the plan, you know, that's good too.
Okay, um, curb like curb inlet stones required to catch basins, um. Bill, I mean, we we normally require, uh, those kind of inlet stones at the catch basins, don't we?
Uh, we we do on roadways. Typically, they're they're not used in parking lots as much, we don't have runs of of curbing for a for a distance. I don't see any, any reason not to waive this.
Uh, the next one is our request number thirty-one, requiring detention basins be set back fifty feet from buildings and twenty feet from property lines.
I actually have those numbers, Dan, uh, I know that, uh, that was a question. And, um, we are on our, on our infiltration basin, we're twenty-five feet from the closest building. And three point five feet, uh, from our closest grade to the property line, closest property.
And Bill, are you all okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, we'll look at the the final design, but yes.
Don't the state regs have setback requirements for basins? I thought there was.
There is.
There is, yeah.
Would this comply with those regs?
Uh, I don't believe the three and a half feet would.
Yeah, and it's going to depend on where my engineer took the measurement from, I think he's taking the three points. I'll have to look at where he took the three point five from.
Yeah, with regards to buildings, I know there's, if you're, i- if your detention pond's upstream of your, um, building, you have a bigger setback, because you don't want water going into the into the building. And then if your building is higher than your basin, I believe there's a a much smaller setback. Off the top of my head, I can't, I can't remember exactly what it is.
And Devin, you're right, on this case, our foundation basements are higher than our basin, because we're doing slabs. Uh, so they will, they'll be above the, uh, ability for the basin to get in and and do any damage.
So the town, the town by law is fifty feet. If it's below in a hundred feet, excuse me, a hundred feet if it's below, the basement is below the elevation of fifty feet. Otherwise.
Okay, so we'll just apply the state regs on on this.
Sure.
Okay. Alright, uh, we're on to page twenty-three. Uh, request number thirty-two, requiring that the results of soil percolation tests be submitted, uh, to the planning board. And, so I don't think this is even necessary, because I I believe you've already submitted those tests to the zoning board, is that right?
Um, yes, I, we have, yes, I believe we've submitted all soil testing and we did it all with the Board of Health as well.
Okay, so I don't, I don't think you need this one, um. Next one is planning board approval of all retaining walls. I think we discussed this before, that if you have any retaining walls facing Main Street, there would be a fieldstone veneer or a fieldstone wall. Um, and I don't think the board, these two, I don't think the board cares about approving the design of the wall. If if they do, they can speak now. Um, so the next one would be the street trees. Uh, this requires street trees to be planted in the grass strip. At thirty-five foot intervals, this is not, this is not a street, so we don't, you don't need street trees, that can be waived. Again, we're still in the subdivision rules and regs here, uh, the next, next requirement is lowing and seating. And so that that can be waived, we don't have any public, uh, strips that are going to be acquired by the town. Uh, everything is internal and will be managed by the successor condo association. Uh, streetlights, there are no streetlights, so that, that can be, uh, that can be waived. Uh, the next section is is really an administration, administration section dealing with, um, subdivision administration that that actually don't need that waiver, because this is on subdivision and and there's no administration being done. Zoning board steps in the shoes of the planning board. And then with respect to site plan approval, uh, request number thirty-eight through fifty-one, all had to do with, uh, requirements for site plan approval, um, mostly procedural requirements, what has to be submitted to the planning board. Uh, so all of those can be waived, because the, uh, forty B process takes place of a of a site plan approval. Uh, these, these really are duplicative, any design standard and site plan approval is is duplicative of the subdivision design standards. Uh, so these can all just be waived. Now we're moving into the Board of Health regulations, uh, and and some of these are are important. And and the first one is, uh, the fee schedule, uh, this, this topic comes up with pretty much every forty B project that that we look at and, uh, the the Board of Health has a review fee of five twenty-five per unit for multifamily housing. Uh, and the board is, uh, the board's agent has has always held pretty firm on this, because this this is their source of of income, this is how they pay for their staff and and pay for the, pay for the professional review. Um, so the board, assuming is not going to, wanted to waive waive this, um, we don't need to decide that tonight, but that that's been asked for and that's something that we haven't waived in the past, we've always denied that that request. I believe. The next section is
Five hundred and twenty-five dollars a unit? So that would be thirty-six times five twenty-five? How much is that?
Eighteen thousand nine hundred.
Eighteen thousand nine hundred? I didn't even pay that to design the septic system. That's ridiculous. That's absurd. You're telling me my engineer is going to charge me fifteen thousand dollars? How many hours, Jamie, did you put into that?
Uh, a few weeks.
And this guy is going to get eighteen to look it over? I can look it over in my sleep. In about five hours. Ridiculous.
Uh, any other comments on on that section from the board? Alright, uh, the next
Don't we have a, isn't there also a letter from the Board of Health on this section?
Eight thousand dollars.
I'm pretty sure Wade is weighed in on the requests, and I don't, I don't remember what specifically he said on this, but they've always
Alex, it's Mike, we've noted your, um, opposition to this fee, uh, and and due diligence, we will discuss this. Thank you.
Alright, so the next request is number ninety-four, this is the, um, requirements and fees for subdivision approvals, so this is when a subdivision comes before the Board of Health and the board is looking at a subdivision application, uh, the prior request had to do with Title V applications. So with with respect to subdivision applications, the board has, I believe, historically waived these fees. So hopefully that that is is some solace to the applicant, uh, that that you're not going to be asked to pay those and and there hasn't been, I don't believe, any technical review of the subject system as part of this project to date. Usually, we actually do review those those design details during the forty B process.
Like, I just, I just want to bring to the board's attention, that I already paid Beto to review the ten thousand gallon a day septic system, I believe. Once. Why am I paying them again for?
Uh, that's, that's not correct, Al, we've never reviewed the septic system.
No?
We we only reviewed it in the the context of how it fit onto the site with the other utilities, with the drainage.
I remember spending four thousand dollars on a septic reveal.
I don't think we have a subject review letter in our, in our record. Alright, so the next, uh, two requests have to do with, um, these are the the Board of Health's, uh, regulations governing uh, Title V systems and and small wastewater treatment facilities. Uh, the applicant has requested that this, this septic system be governed by Title V. And and not be subject to more strict local requirements. Um, I'm assuming the board is okay with that, this project site, unlike others we've dealt with, uh, is not environmentally sensitive. Uh, we don't have downstream, uh, wetland resources, uh, or other sensitive receptors such as private wells, um, so I don't, I don't think we have the same concern with this project as we have with others. Uh, request number ninety-seven, uh, this is a request that, um, uh, actually, there's, there's a bunch of sections to section three point one. And what the applicant is requesting is a a waiver from the entire section, but uh, one of the, one of the requirements is that the groundwater levels be established during the high water season of December fifteenth, April thirtieth. And I believe that the Board of Health agent, uh, preferred to have that done during during the high season and not outside of that that high season. So.
Can I speak to that, Dan?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Um, so we we've done a number of, uh, perks and test pits during, uh, the town of Norfolk's high groundwater season. Um, and have a very good basis for seasonal high groundwater. With the redesign of the system, uh, we may have to go and do supplemental testing. What we're looking to do is not have to wait until December fifteenth to actually perform that testing to finish designing a septic system if it's needed. Um, where we feel that between, um, the state's act of allowing us to use modeling or redox amorphic features to, uh, determine high groundwater and the previous testing that we've done with the town president. Um, I think we, we feel con- confident that we have enough data to design this correctly. But we may need some more test holes and would, uh, would like to be able to do it before December.
Alright, why don't we follow up with Wade on that, given what you've said, does Wade have the prior test bit information that you're talking about?
He he was with me on both occasions, um, I, we've got Bill too, can can Bill speak to this? Because I think, um, I think he might be able to provide some insight on whether or not it's a good waiver.
Well, I don't want to step on on the Board of Health's feet on this.
I understand.
But I, but I think if you have test bit data, groundwater data, perk data that was witnessed by the the Board of Health agent. And now you're doing is supplementing that information. If it was me, I would probably agree to allow that waiver, but again, I'm not, not going to speak for the Board of Health or or for Wade.
Yeah, I'm sorry to put you in that position.
No, that that's fine.
Is the leaching field in roughly the same location as where you had done the tests?
Uh, yeah, there's quite a few that are, but they they, again, because of the the shift in the buildings. Uh, I believe that we may have to do a couple more test pits, but again, I'm I'm working on the design now, so until I'm completed with it, I won't be sure.
Know what, one option, Jamie and I, maybe you could put a, uh, a test well in. And and then just, uh, monitor that during the the high groundwater season?
I I think the majority of the area that if I do have to do anymore are actually upgrading of the previous testing. You know, and we're in good soils, so again, I think it's, I think that it's going to be a moot point, but um, I'm just looking for the flexibility, we're not looking to try to get away with anything.
And under state law, you don't, you can take, you can actually measure, uh, your your groundwater elevations at any time during the year and and just make the adjustment, right, based upon well data fluctuations?
In fact, you don't even, it, you can find, uh, staining, uh, called modeling or redox in the ground, which is, um, the iron in the ground, when it contacts water, it will actually rust like a bumper on a car. Um, and so the water will come up and then go down and come up, and seasonally, if it does that, you'll see staining in the ground and in the soil. Um, so the state now makes us use that for high groundwater. And, um, and usually we find that much higher than you would actually see standing water in a hole.
Yep, and and staining works, except if you have sand, right, and and
Yeah, so if you find, if you're in coarse sands, but again, when you're in sands like we are, um, or I believe us to be. We down gradient, usually water is pretty flat. And so by holding that lower level where we've actually seen during the high water season, we would still be covered. I think either way, we we've got the safety net of having done on two different dates, multiple soils. I think either way, we've got the safety net of having done on two different dates multiple soils out here with Wade in the wet season.
And how deep were the elevations? What's your separation?
Oh, you know, I don't know off the top of my head, Dan. It's there were several feet down, several feet down. But we're building some of the site up in the area of the septic as well. So we're going to have a greater-than-five-foot separation from the bottom of our field to the water table.
Okay. Why don't I just follow up with Wade and talk to him about these issues, and we can report back at the next meeting? All right, the next request was number ninety-eight, wave plan requirement showing road crown and gutter elevations.
Hey, Mike, can I interrupt one sec?
Go ahead, Al.
Yeah, we're going to follow up with Wade and report back at the next meeting? This thing's going to go on forever. How come this wasn't addressed, Dan, in the last meeting? And this information accumulated so you could ask these questions, and we've got you the answers?
This is the first meeting that we're doing waivers, and we just got Wade's information over the last week.
No. So we're going to wait till the next meeting and then talk about this again? That's the plan? We'll wait another month, and then we'll just start talking about it again. God forbid we try to get these answers and be prepared for the next meeting. We don't want to do that.
Keep the job alive.
Okay, Mike, you want to keep going?
Mike, I'd like a little more structure to this. I think it's only reasonable and fair that we have a little more structure here. Well, I can only see the top of your head.
How's that?
Yes, I do.
All right, all right. Dan, what information do we need from Wade?
I was going to follow up with him on this waiver request to see if he has any concerns with waiving the groundwater elevation measurement period, given what Jamie has said about the fact that they've already done testing and state law doesn't require it.
All right, I mean, that's not going to hold us up on closing the hearing tonight. I mean, we can include that in our deliberations, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. Al, this isn't going to hold us up.
Well, I just like the information so we can, you know, go back and forth and get the resolution and not just get it five minutes or eight hours before the next meeting, and then we all toss it around again.
Yeah, no, we won't be tossing it around again.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, the section that we were just on was request number ninety-eight. And Bill, you don't, Bill McGrath, give any issues with this request?
Hey, Dan, I'm actually reading Wade's letter, and he says it's a reasonable request.
Which one are you talking about?
Wade's letter dated June fifteenth, 2020.
Which request?
Ninety-eight.
Okay.
You mean ninety-seven, Devin? Is that the-
Well, he says, oh, sorry, sorry. For ninety-seven, he says the local requirement for maximum groundwater observations would slow down the application process.
Right, but I wasn't sure, I wasn't clear what he meant by that, if he was giving an opinion as to whether the waiver should be granted or not. A lot of his memo wasn't really saying, I think this should be granted or it shouldn't be granted. Some of them, he did say that, and others he didn't. So I wanted to follow up with him to understand where he stood on all these requests.
Was he clear on the memo, Devin?
I'm reading it again.
All right.
I mean, I hate to extrapolate this out and take the worst position possible, you know, based on his responses. I mean, that seems like that's what Stan's doing.
No, actually, what I'm trying to do is protect the town, and I want to make sure if we're going to grant waivers from bylaws that we're granting them after having vetted them thoroughly. And that's our job, that's my job. So I'd appreciate it if you just, you know, let us do the job. I've been working cooperatively with your attorney, your engineer. And I think we should just keep going through the list. The more time we spend talking about this, the less time we have to finish this tonight.
So it would be nice to have his comments addressed. If he actually addressed ninety-seven, then that verbiage should be communicated to all of us.
I think Devin's trying to find it, Al. Thanks.
I don't want to put words in Wade's mouth, but to me, it seems like it seemed like his opinion was it would slow this whole process down. To me, they have to comply with the state regulations regardless.
Yeah, he's saying the applicant is seeking a fast track to gather field information for a revised septic system. The local requirement for maximum groundwater observation would slow down the application process, period. So he doesn't give an opinion as to whether this should be waived or not. So all I'm suggesting is I follow up with them and say, are you okay with this waiver, or do you think we should deny it?
My position is if he wasn't okay with the waiver, he would have stated it.
Is there a problem with following up with him? I don't understand why you're resisting just asking him a question. Why is that a problem?
Well, the resistance is you've been doing this for six meetings.
We just got this letter on June fifteenth.
No, but every meeting, it's something different. We've got to follow up with this. Why don't we look into this? Why don't we look into that? I'd like to stay focused, Dan.
Al, we're moving the process. We're going to get that through tonight, so.
It's part of the process.
I also just say something. A lot of towns right now aren't even, they're not even holding hearings until at least September. So I think this town is, out of all the towns I've seen, doing a pretty good job. Al, I do get your concerns. I just, out of all the towns I've seen, you know, because of Dan and Mike and, you know, Chris isn't a part of this hearing, obviously, I think this town's doing a fabulous job keeping this process moving. And on top of that, you know, there is a forty-five-day appeal period after the state of emergency is lifted, so I'm not saying there's not a rush, but I think we're moving at a fair pace.
It is a good point, Devin, because there's a lot of people out there who can't even move projects in a lot of towns around Massachusetts right now.
And to be honest, my hands are tied in other towns. I can't.
Yeah, I have the same problem. My business, same problem. I'm strapped in towns that won't even have a hearing for the next three months.
Okay, let's move on.
So moving on to number ninety-nine, this is another one that I was scratching my head looking at Wade's letter. Wade's comment was, Section 3.3 of the Local Board of Health On-Site Regulation, this section does not pertain to the waiver as stated. So I'm not sure what that means, and so I would follow up with him just to get clarification of whether he has a concern. Mike Ashonacy explained to me that the reason for this request is that actually, this might be a different one. Actually, Jamie or Mike, can you just explain what this is and what the purpose for the waiver is?
Mike, do you remember what this section actually says? It's number ninety-nine, Al.
Ninety-nine.
I thought this was the, I thought it was related to the certification, Jamie, of the pumps in the system.
That's ninety-six.
That's ninety, yeah. So ninety-nine, I would have to see exactly what the waiver says. Let me see if.
Can you scroll down, Rich? The bottom half of that waiver, I still think is ninety-nine, and we can't read it? Thank you.
Yep.
Let's see, ninety-nine.
Can you scroll back a little more?
How's that?
Yeah, I'd just like to read the whole thing. I don't really know that this is a problem to waive. I mean, wouldn't, Jamie, wouldn't you be comfortable putting this on a plan?
No, this is actually, I hereby certify, yeah, this is my wording, isn't it?
It is.
That's what you're proposing.
Yes, yeah. This is, we put this on every septic gas built that we submit around the entire state. So we're just asking to use the statement that we do everywhere.
I think there might be a separate statement that the town is asking for.
Yeah, the town is asking, the regulation requires a statement that you make, that there are no public wells within five hundred feet, no private wells within two hundred feet, no BBWs within one hundred and fifty feet, et cetera.
Yeah, and so the part that we took a little bit of issue with on it is that we know we've located all known wells, especially within a hundred feet. We found one well on an adjacent site, which is two hundred feet away. But certifying that something is great double the required distance away or more, you know, we just kind of felt was overkill. It's not asked for in most towns. Actually, I don't know if it's asked for in any towns. Maybe Devin or Bill could speak to that. But we felt that this was a more appropriate statement, you know, where our system's located in the center of our site. We know we have a hundred feet clearly to every other potential well or more, and there's no public wells or anything like that on the mapping within that distance.
Yeah, and there weren't any private wells anyway, right? Isn't this neighborhood served by public water?
There is a private well next door. We have it located, and we're, like I said, we're two hundred feet from it. But again, the wells themselves, we do the research at the Board of Health. You can ask the owners, but if they don't tell you, or if they point in the wrong spot, if there's no record of it, you have an issue. So that's why, you know, we write down all known wells. But again, it's, we felt that this certification that we have is more than enough.
Rich, isn't that well next door under orders from the town to hook up to town water that's in front of their property?
I don't think that's, I don't think they're under orders to do that.
They have a, they have an illegal well that serves the public there. They serve over twenty-five people, and I believe they're under order to hook up to town water.
But that's the only well that we're aware of. And again, we just felt more confident with the statement. We know with entitled five ramifications, we have no issue. So we just, we like the idea of being able to certify this. It stops us from having to from having to go any further with going up an additional hundred feet further beyond on adjacent properties.
Okay, that sounds reasonable to me. I'll just run it by Wade, but it seems like something the Board would be willing to grant. All right, so request number one hundred, garbage grinders. Yeah, you're not proposing them, so I'm actually surprised that this regulation is still there. I mean, most people don't even use them anymore, right?
Correct.
Well, tonight at the Board of Health, they voted to remove that design criteria from their local regs.
Oh, good, okay.
The next one is odor control venting requirements. What was the reason for that?
Yeah, so certain systems don't allow you to use charcoal filters. For example, Presby, they don't want you to use on their passive ventilation system charcoal filters. Now, in this application, I don't plan on using a Presby, but the advanced treatment that we put in, putting a charcoal filter on a blower system can actually reduce the amount of oxygen that's brought into the system. So what we want to do is we want to be able to utilize the best treatment possible without being hampered to have to put a charcoal filter on it when it's probably not going to be needed.
Is there another way to control the odors if you can't use the charcoal?
Well, you know, that's a great question. Typically, systems should not have odors. Sometimes when you first start them up, and Bill, or Devin, speak up if you want, when they're first starting up, you can get the start of an odor. But if a system is healthy and running appropriately and has the, in this case, the right advanced treatment, we wouldn't expect to have any odors. Do you agree, Bill?
Yeah, I think that's correct, as long as the system is maintained over time. You know, I think the question here is if the system isn't maintained and there are issues, and it becomes a nuisance.
Yep.
So where does the Board stand with what they've waived? And maybe the language might be better served if it committed you to using best practices for the system you design.
Yeah, and again, I'm not opposed to putting a charcoal filter. I actually like the idea of them and find them effective in some cases. We just don't want to be handicapped by it. So I'm amenable to keeping in the odor-controlling venting devices as long as they're not prohibited by the treatment, you know, or by the approval of the treatment, you know, the IA provider.
Maybe, again, maybe the language, best practices, would give you that leeway to do what's appropriate to whatever type of system you end up designing.
I think that that's, I think that that's fair. That gives me the ability to not be handcuffed. But also, you know, like the end of a leaching field in a case like this, I'm sure I could utilize charcoal filters and, but not have to put it on maybe a blower or some kind of an BBR unit, something like that.
Yeah, I think it'll commit you to addressing the issue, just not the specifics of how you address it.
I'm comfortable with best management practice on this as well.
For the record, I'm against the charcoal filter because it masks a potential problem. When a homeowner or somebody maintaining the system doesn't have that filter in place and has that self-built-in alarm where the odor comes, it triggers them to call somebody that there's a problem, that there's a maintenance problem with the pump chamber, that there's a lack of servicing. And so by putting the charcoal filter on, you're masking it, doing potential long-term damage to the system before somebody discovers that problem. But you guys are the engineers, so whatever you say.
I would like to just echo Al's point in that we certainly don't want to mask it. So maybe the better protection is to put in some sort of language that talks about the frequency in which the system needs to be serviced, whether that's annually, by, you know, whatever the language needs to be, but talks about that schedule of maintenance.
There's going to be a treatment system here and a contract where somebody with some type of level of wastewater has to own the system, all right? And the first thing that person's going to do is come in here and say, get this thing off my system.
Yeah, agreed.
So there is a service, my point, Chris, is there is a service contract, and it'll most likely be with a Level Three operator.
Yeah, so that's all. I just didn't know if that language was in this part, like, does that provide the protection? Saying, hey, the system is going to be checked and maintained annually, and then that responsibility is shifted to that person who does that maintenance?
Yeah, there's going to be a full operation and maintenance schedule. And with condominiums or projects like this, I believe the Title V inspection is even required every two years. So, yeah, there's definitely more inspections and maintenance than a typical system.
And is that written into the condo documents, Jamie, or is that something that's between the town as well?
I think it's both, actually. Again, I don't want to speak for the attorneys, but the state requires it, and the town is going to require that operation and maintenance contract for, I believe, two years on a continuous basis.
Thank you. That answers my question. All right, I get, I get the concept. We'll, I'll, I'll draft some language for that, for that waiver.
I think.
It's consistent with what we talked about. Um, all right, so moving on to number one oh two, um, uh, this is the variance procedures for Board of Health regulations that, that's, uh, doesn't apply here because we're, we're acting as the variance authority and, and we're granting waivers so that you don't need that waiver. Um, groundwater supply protection, uh, regulations. And this, this provision would require, um, ground, a groundwater impact report. Um, it, it, we definitely have run into this before. We've, we've waived it in the past. We've, we've been more concerned with these issues when there's downs, down gradient, uh, sensitive receptors, which don't exist here unless you count the illegal well next door, um, which we haven't heard about until tonight. So I, I don't think that's an issue. Um, so I think that's okay to waive in this case. Uh, the dumpster regulations, um, I think we can deal with that through the condition that I discussed. Um, that requires a permit for the location of a dumpster. We can waive the requirement for the location of the dumpster. And, and I think we, we can handle the issues that we talked about with, with the condition and the permit. Uh, then the number ninety-six deals with the certification, uh, for the, the pumping system, I guess, within the septic system, if I'm not mistaken, and, 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 um.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jamie. What, can maybe you can explain this?
Yeah, I, no, actually, I, I think that we, um, I think that we just have it removed. I'm, I'm not opposed, uh, to, to providing it. We, we talked about it and, and, and we'll do it.
All right, so I'll withdraw that one.
Please.
All right, then we move on to, see, we're, we're moving on to fees and bonds, security. Uh, the first one is, uh, zoning boards forty B rules and regs. This is a requirement that all struck, all plans be signed and stamped by an architect. Um, that, that definitely is, uh, antiquated. It, it's more customer to have site plans signed and stamped by registered professional engineers, which we have here. Uh, so I think, I think that's, that's okay to waive. In fact, we should probably go through the forty B regulations at some later date to modernize them, uh, and probably take, take that one out. Uh, number three, uh, section seven D of the forty B regs, uh, this, this is the filing fee, uh, provision. And so I think what the applicant has done is paid a filing fee based upon seventy-two units, which is the, which was the original project plan. That, that was a, a filing fee of sixteen thousand nine twenty, according to the request. And, and the applicant is asking for that to be reduced to, uh, nine thousand dollars, which would be, which would have been the fee for uh, thirty-six units. I believe. I haven't checked the math, but that looks like what the applicant is asking for. I don't think we've ever been asked to waive this before. Um, that's something we can talk about at the next meeting.
Yeah. Dan?
Yes.
Uh, did, uh, if I recall on, um, Bishop's, uh, uh, project, did, uh, I, I'm just trying to recall when we, uh, took some of the units, or maybe I guess it was, uh, uh, the project on Cleveland Street, and we went from forty-eight down to thirty-two units. Am I correct? The project up on Cleveland Street, I think it was eighty-four Cleveland Street. Did we reduce the filing fees for that one, where the number of units were reduced?
Is that Bishop's first project? Is that Boyd's Crossing or which one is that?
No, I'm thinking of, um, uh, Mr. DeHart's, uh, uh, or Hart's, uh, project up on Cleveland Street.
Yeah, I wasn't involved with that, so I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
So, if, if I increase the project by twenty units, you wouldn't be looking for two hundred dollars a unit for twenty more units?
Hypothetical, I don't, I don't know how I can answer that.
I, I, no, I guess, I, I just want to make sure we're being consistent across the board, that's all.
I know Dan would be looking for every nickel if I got twenty more units out of it, and you guys all know that too.
All right, so I, I think we get the, the point of the act of the request. Um, let's see, the next one is, uh, waiving, uh, waiving requirement of payment for the board's attorneys' fees. Um, I, I don't think that, that's actually been disputed here. I, I don't think the applicant is paying, uh, the legal fees. The next one is the water fee schedule. Um, and, and so I think what the applicant is asking for is a waiver of the water connection fees that would apply to this project. Um, and I know that in, uh, the enclave, um, in, in, uh, yeah, the enclave project, we did waive water fees for the affordable units. Uh, but that was in exchange for off-site mitigation that the developer was doing. And I, I distinctly remember, uh, that, that connection, that, that nexus. Um, I don't think we've waived building permit fees, uh, in, in the forty B projects I've worked on. And I don't think we've waived water fees for any other project. That's, that request, and, and am I correct, Mike, that that request is just for the affordable units?
Well, well, generally speaking, um, you know, there, there's, there's been, with respect to all the fees, I mean, at, at a minimum, I understand if the board doesn't want to grant the fees for the market units, but I don't think it's unfair to at least ask for the board's consideration in, in waiving or at least reducing, uh, some of the fees with respect to the affordable units.
Dan, do you remember what the off-site mitigation was for Enclave in Rockwood?
Yeah, so for Enclave, the developer reclaimed Village Green Street and, uh, built a sidewalk down to, uh, what's the, what was the cross street there?
Cleveland, right.
I'm sorry?
Or Cleveland or Rockwood?
Rockwood.
It's all the way to Rockwood?
I think it was Rockwood.
Yeah.
Um, there was also, uh, walking trails going to the, through the wetland system to the other side that they divided, and he donated that land as open space. Uh, for Rockwood, the applicant had to install sidewalks, um, in front of the street, I mean, in front of the project. And there was some traffic mitigation. But I don't remember if we waived fees for Rockwood. I'd have to go back and look at the decisions.
That would be helpful. When we deliberate it, Dan, it'd be, um, good if we had that information.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll see what we did for the other projects as well.
Thank you. But feel free to step out of the box, Mike. You don't have to do everything the same way you did the other ones. Every project's a little bit different.
No, no, no.
This one's going to give the town three hundred thousand dollars in taxes, and ninety percent of these units are one bedrooms and, and some two bedrooms. This is a good score for the town.
Yeah.
I think that's a fair point.
We're going to take all these fees into consideration. Yeah, yeah, we're, we're gonna, you know, for example, that five twenty-five fee for the Board of Health, you know, I think that's unreasonable. But, and we're not going to deliberate this tonight. We're going to take all this, we're going to deliberate, we're going to look at it as one big picture and, uh, make an assessment at that time. Okay.
All right, uh, so the next, next request is number one oh three. Uh, this is the demolition uh, permit application form that the Building Department has. Um, and, and Mike Vaschanacy, do, do you want to address this?
Yeah, uh, if you look at the schedule of required documents that need to be submitted with this, there, there's a whole litany of stuff. And, and one of the documents is called optional. Now, I can't find what optional documents are. So I don't, we don't want the building inspector to be able to pick willy-nilly what he can elect to pick and choose, you know, what he thinks applicable. So what we're asking for is, uh, you know, um, to, to, um, require the applicant to provide a workman's comp affidavit, uh, the debris disposal, uh, area or, or site, and to provide a liability insurance certificate as part of the application for a demo permit to the, uh, to the Building Department.
Have you run this by the Building Department, this request, by any chance?
I have not.
Does anyone, does anyone know if the Building Department has actually weighed in on these? Amy, did, have we received any comments from them?
No, they haven't, they, they haven't weighed in on this one.
All right, and then the next one is, um, uh, a similar request. Uh, this concerns, uh, the ability for the applicant to get a foundation permit rather than, uh, going through the entire building permit application process, uh, to do a more streamlined request for a foundation permit in order to build the foundations for the buildings in the, in the back of the site. Um, and my understanding from talking to Mike Vaschanacy today is that the town in Norfolk doesn't have a process of granting foundation permits, uh, which I think is unusual, and in the, the other towns that I've worked in, it's, it's pretty standard. Um, so this would basically create a foundation permit process. And the applicant is proposing to pay five hundred dollars for each foundation as the application fee.
So, well, I did, I did explain in my letter before how, how the town's done it. So they, if, they do allow for the foundations, just a full building permit. It's not, it's not a partial.
Right, but they make you go through the entire building permit application process with the building permit fees, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, so I think that's, I think the point here is that the, the applicant would like to do this in phases and do the foundation permits first, which seems to, to make sense.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, i- i- I think Al estimated eight grand a unit for building permit fees last time we got together. That's a quarter of a million dollars we have to pay upfront. Uh, I don't think you get a bank to lend you a quarter of a million dollars to install some foundations that could sit there for, you know, four, five, six, twelve months. We're not, we're not trying to get out of the fee, you know, we're, again, we're looking for a reduction in the affordables, but we're willing to pay for the, the, um, the, uh, foundation permit.
Do any board members have any concerns with this?
I, I think it's a reasonable request.
All right, that brings us to the end.
You're kidding.
It's still early.
Yes. Let's go. Don't you guys, don't you want the three hundred thousand dollars in tax money? You can't get there unless we start building. Okay. All right, thank you.
Excuse me, Mr., Mr. Chairman, did we address all of the issues in Al's, uh, letter regarding, um, the refunding of some fees? It was, that was because of the reduction number of units? Was there anything else, Al, that you put in your letter that, uh, we have not addressed?
Well, the, the, the architect, I, I received two bills, and he ate up seventy-five hundred dollars, and I, I didn't get anything. I, I believe you guys also believe that. You know, how, how, how did someone eat up seventy-five hundred dollars? It's, I got an invoice, services rendered. And, and then lunch money. I don't know where he ate, but, you know, it wasn't at Nikki's Pizza. Well, I, I asked for the seventy-five hundred. I, I never got any accounting on that. I never got any specificity on a bill. Now, I didn't get any hours, uh, services rendered or any kind of input from this guy. And I thought that eventually I'd receive something. We talked about this, I don't know, three months ago, four months ago? You know, I'm sure he's moved on and he's got some other clients that he sends out seventy-five hundred dollar bills to, and so, yeah, I have an issue with that. I have, uh, yeah, then I think you guys, if, if you hired somebody to come to your house and got a bill for seventy-five hundred bucks and had no idea what they did, would you be upset? I bet you would.
I would want to say it.
Rich, Rich, was, was this somebody that we hired?
Yes.
Don, I, I, I can address this, and I, 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 I just saw Al's letter probably about an hour before the meeting. And I, I, I can definitely address this, uh, at, at the next meeting, but the architect that was hired was hired to review the sixty-unit building, and, and, and the guy is a specialist in apartment buildings in downtown areas, and that's what he does. And he came in, he, he attended, uh, at least one staff meeting. He wrote, I think, two comment letters. Um, and so we can all argue whether or not all that was worth seventy-five hundred dollars, but I, I don't think it's fair to say that we don't know what he did. I mean, we, we know what he did. He, he spent a lot of time reviewing the materials and he had conversations with, with, uh, the project's architect. And he came up with ideas to improve the design of, of the project. And, and I, I understand that the applicant chose to switch gears and, and do a completely different project and probably feels frustrated that he spent peer review fees on a project that's no longer on the table. Uh, I, 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 I get that. I don't, I, I, I dispute, I think, the suggestion that, that the applicant had to change to thirty-six units because the board didn't like this, the apartment building. I, I don't think that's true. I, I think we all liked it a lot, and, and we were trying to work with the developer to, to make it a nicer building. And, uh, that, that, the, the developer chose to go a different path, which is fine. But, but Mr. Balmer billed us for seventy-five hundred dollars, if, if that's the right number. He did provide, uh, uh, he did provide a deliverable. We can agree that, we can disagree about whether that was worth seventy-five hundred dollars. At the end of the day, it is what it is. Um, and in hindsight, maybe, maybe we spent, spent too much money. Maybe we could find a cheaper architect next time. That's, that's a valid concern, but um, I, I, I can, I can follow up with the architect to see if he can provide a more detailed billing, uh, invoice. Um.
Um, I, I, the.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, can you tell me, did you hire this architect?
The, uh, I believe, yeah, the board did.
The board did?
The board, yes.
It's a peer review.
So did you have experience with this, Mr. Balmer?
I, I do, yeah. He's worked in a long time.
I'm talking to the chairman, please.
Um, it's something we felt would be, add value to the process.
Mike, the problem is this, is development costs in this town is forcing forty B developments. While that's good for someone like Mr. Hill, who makes his living this way, I don't think this is necessarily what the town wants as its model development mode. And when you get these other add-on fees that just never end, it's absolutely ridiculous. And I don't think an answer of "it is what it is" is a fair answer to anyone, especially someone that has basically cooperated with you for endless months on end.
Mike, if I could add also that the reason for the thirty-six units was the suggestions. Architects are great, you know, they put a, they put a little painting on a, a, a plan, and they have no idea what that does to the civil. All right, and, and coming from a civil background and, and knowing exactly all the infrastructure, there was no way to fit our drainage and septic system in with what he was asking. So you could say that I chose to go in a different direction? No, I didn't choose, I was pushed there. I mean, it, it's just not accurate what Dan is saying. But, but, that being said, I mean, we're, we're past that. I have two invoices with nothing on them for seventy-five hundred dollars, and that's, that's BS. And if I came to your house and said, hey, uh, let me look at your septic system, and then handed you a bill for seventy-five hundred dollars, what would you do? I feel like I came, I consulted with you. I drew something on the back of a napkin. Come on. All right, Al, we're not going to res- resolve this tonight. I think I heard Dan saying that he gets some additional detail. I don't, you know, uh, he's not going to change the, the fact that it was, um, seventy-five hundred. Um, but, um, you know, we can beat this to death. You know, I get everybody's point. It is expensive, but, um, that's why we're taking all of this testimony. That's the whole purpose of this process, to take all this testimony, to listen to the complaints, and, uh, and then when we deliberate, make, uh, make decisions. All right, um.
It is what it is, Mike.
Mr. Chairman, could we, could we get Al, uh, an itemized, uh, description of what was completed and, you know, just a deliverable?
Yeah, Joe, I think that's what Dan was intending to do, correct, Dan?
Yeah, I, I can ask Cliff to put into writing what he did. I, I, to be honest with you, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but if, if you want him to do that, he, I'm, I'm sure we can ask him to do that. He, we, we paid him seventy-five hundred dollars. The least he can do is give us a more detailed invoice. There's no problem asking for that.
Yeah, I think that's a very reasonable question on, um, the applicant's part and on the part of the board.
I agree.
Thank you. All right, um.
Thank you, all right. Time to pay loose ends, what else did you have on the agenda tonight, Dan, that we needed to cover, or is the waiver set?
I don't think we need to cover anything else. I think you covered the questions from the butters, and I think I got most of my questions answered by talking to Bill McGrath and to Michael Shaughnessy this afternoon. So I'm comfortable where we are, I think we can produce a revised draft of the waivers and a revised draft of the decision within the next week or so, and you could schedule another deliberate, you can schedule a deliberation meeting, you know, in a few weeks. I think that the board could close the hearing tonight, subject to a submittal from Jamie with that spec plan we discussed. I don't think there's any other evidence the board needs.
Mr. Chairman, just looking through my notes, I think one outstanding issue that I think we kicked down the road from the last hearing because of how long it was taken, was the talk of the surety, the number of units, and the withholding of the number of occupancy permits, and then we kind of got into the discussion a little bit about how we'd have to build this. It's paragraph J1 in the decision. I don't, to me, that's kind of important to kind of figure out what we're going to do with that, what the board's going to do with that, or what the board's inclination is.
Okay. Dan, do you have that?
Well, I think Rich has the decision, he could put up on the screen. I can pull up my copy, but I'm not sharing the screen with you.
It's on the screen.
Mike, I just want to bring to your attention that Peter Chipman has his hand up.
Okay, thank you.
So this is J1, Mike, is that what you're referring to?
Right, right, right. We got into the release of the number of building permits until certain milestones of the project were completed and withholding. You had no more than 12 occupancy permits for the project market rate units would be issued. I said, well, it's changed, so let's hold the last two occupancy units as surety to make sure everything is complete, final, final complete before they're issued. And I think we kicked that down the road last time.
Yeah, I think, I think we, you and I had changed, we added some language on May 21st, which I think was the day after our hearing, and yeah, Rich, can you scroll down to J1? Is that what you're doing?
Yeah.
All right, stop, yeah, right there's good. It's kind of hard to see it, but I can read it out loud. So the way this has been set up is that no building permits for buildings 8 through 11 shall be issued until the basin binder course for the driveway and parking areas serving buildings 1 through 7 have been completely installed. So buildings 1 through 7, I believe, are the front duplexes. All right, Jamie?
Um, 1, 2, yes, building 1 through 6 are the front duplexes.
Yeah, and then 7 is the one at the end.
That's correct, yeah.
All right, so the base and binder for that driveway has to be put in before we issue building permits for the back buildings. Okay, that's, that's what that says. Does that work for you guys?
No. So that means the septic system has to be in before you dig the foundations in the rear.
Yeah, no, you definitely need the foundations in the rear for the septic.
No.
In the utilities.
That's right.
But doesn't the waiver that you asked regarding foundation permits allow you to build the foundations?
It does, but they have a filing for the full building permit and paying the full fee.
Why don't we just add that as a exception, right? So no building permits except for foundation permits for buildings 8 through 11 shall be issued. That way, you can build, you can do your foundations. And that would be the sequence anyway, right? You do all the foundations in the back, and then once those are done, you can put the basin binder for the driveway. Is that what you're, is that what you're planning to do anyway?
No, the foundation, all foundations will go in first.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, front, front side and back.
Right, so you can do, so I think that, I think the board is okay with that, you can put all your foundations in, and then you put your basin binder in, and then you can get your building permits for the back, for the back units.
Yeah, I think I'm okay with that, but I mean, I know you skip over a lot, like the 10,000 gallon a day septic system, you know, a complete drainage infrastructure, water lines, underground electric. So there's a lot of months of work.
Actually, we did put that exception in, it's the next sentence, notwithstanding the foregoing, foundation permits may be issued, so we actually dealt with that there. And then scrolling down, so the next provision is no occupancy permit for a building in the project shall be issued until the basin binder code for that portion of the driveway serving the building has been installed. So that's, that's a no-brainer, right? That's not a problem?
No, that's not a problem.
And then, for the, for the buildings 8 through 11, you can't get occupancy permits until all of the infrastructure is completed, except for the final coat of pavement, which can be put on after the winter. And you can also choose to substitute this security for a tri-party agreement. So even if you don't finish the infrastructure and you still want to get occupancy permits, you can basically bond it. We don't use a bonding mechanism, but we'll do a tri-party, which basically means your lender will set aside money so that if you default, we've got a pool of money, we can dip into it. It's not something the town ever wants to do, but it's some security.
I'm okay with that.
All right, so you guys can look at that again, and then if you have any more questions or issues, we can talk about it at the next meeting. And J3 was the stabilization security that we talked about before.
I thought we, that was, that amount was going to be reduced.
Yeah, that's right.
$25,000?
Yeah. That's crazy.
What did we talk about? Is that something we talked about the last meeting?
Oh, yeah, we talked about it, I don't recall what the amount was. I thought it was like $7,500, that sticks in my head, but I could be wrong.
All right, I can go back to the tape and see if we can find it.
All right. Tim, I know you're on this, what about Joe, Don, and other members of the board? What's your recollection that, I know we talked about this, I don't remember the number, what's everyone else's recollection?
Amy, do you have your notes right from the last meeting? Because I do remember, yes, we did talk about reducing that.
I don't want to guess.
I'm looking to see if I put it in the minutes, I might not have been that specific.
Yeah, Mike, I won't know off the top of my head.
Would have been the 5:20 minutes that I just passed out, so I don't know if you guys recall. Look, that's my agenda.
I think it was 10. Tim, you kind of, Tim, I think you made a recommendation, was it 10?
Wow, that number sticks in my mind, but I don't put a gun to my head, but that sounds about right.
Yeah, honestly, the first number that came to my mind was 10. Like I said, I don't want to guess, but...
Well, we could ask Bill McGrath to give us an estimate of what it would take. I mean, the issue here is if you demo the site and cut all the trees down, what would it take for the town to step in and stabilize?
But we're going to, we're going to put the erosion control up before we do that.
If you don't do it, that's why this is for, is if you default, or you sell the property to somebody else, and they default.
But you have a construction meeting, and the first thing you do is you put the erosion control in, and then it gets inspected. Then you're allowed to take, start the demo and take the trees down.
Hey, gentlemen, I just went through my notes from the last meeting, it was, I think we agreed on $10,000.
Yeah, I think Bill estimated $7,500 to $8,000 for review, and then you said 10,000, start with 10,000 in the review account, and then maybe it can be lower.
All right, can we go with 10? Is everyone in agreement with that?
That's fine, I still don't understand what it's called, but can you explain it to me, Bill, real quick?
Can I explain it to you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm putting the erosion control up, and you're inspecting it.
Right.
It's part of the K2, it's part of the K inspector part.
It is, but I think it's the same as any other bond. It's just protecting the town in the event that, for whatever reason, you go and clear the site and walk away. I mean, I think this is a little bit different, and I think that's why the board's right in reducing the amount. But if for some reason you walk away, despite the fact that erosion controls are in, the site may need to be stabilized. I think this site is a little bit different than other sites, since it's not heavily wooded, but I think it's still protection for the town. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, I think once you get to a certain point in the project, this bond goes away.
Yeah, when you put the asphalt down, right?
The point I had made last time, that I remember, was, I don't think my concern was as much towards erosion control as opposed to, you know, the what-if scenario, if, you know, that building was halfway demolished and you had walked away. You know, that just becomes a public safety hazard that the town would have to address.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's right, Devin. We had that discussion as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Got it.
All right, Michael Shaughnessy, did you have anything else you wanted to raise on the draft conditions?
Yeah, be with me one second here. And the last thing was prefunding a landscaping maintenance plan, I'm looking for the paragraph now. In paragraph G1, evidence that the applicant has prefunded the necessary maintenance for the first two years from the installation of plantings with the condo trust. We had asked to have that requirement removed, and I don't think we ever got a determination from the board.
My notes show that the board agreed to take that out.
Okay.
Yeah, I struck it on my current version. Does anyone disagree?
Okay, hearing all the comments, we're at the point now where we're going to probably need one more meeting, obviously to do our deliberations, but at the next meeting, I think the board would like to do a final review of the waiver and the decision, and then do our deliberations. Now, Al, this is directed at you, we can do one of two things. We can close the public hearing tonight, and we'll do our final review, waiver review, and deliberate, and you won't be able to participate in the review and waiver process and add value, or we can leave the public meeting open until our next meeting. When we do the final review of the waivers and the decision, you can add value and participate. So which way do you want to go? We can either close it tonight, we're going to need another meeting either way. If we leave it open, you'll be able to, you know, participate when we do the final review of the waiver and decision. What would you like to do?
Will Dan be at the next meeting if I'm not? Can we close it?
What's that?
Will Dan be at the next meeting if I close it and I can't participate?
Oh, and, oh, and Michael Shaughnessy can't be there either.
I'm not letting the fox in the hen house, guys. All right, so we're going to keep this open.
Okay, fair enough. Joe, if you can make a motion to continue the public hearing to a date in town's schedule?
Mike, can I ask you one question? Can we get the public, any other public comments out today? So we don't have to start with it at the next meeting?
Yeah, absolutely.
Are you talking to us, Al? It's almost 10 o'clock, okay? We got nothing more to say. And let's just be clear, we were asked to follow up the beginning with our questions because it went on for so long.
No, I'm legitimate when I mention that. That wasn't a shot at you.
Okay, I need a sarcasm meter on your Zoom screen.
I think I saw your system overflowing when I went down Boardman Street.
Peter Chipman does have his hand up.
Peter?
Prior to next meeting, I'm requesting of the ZBA that they provide a complete legal billing from Dan Hill's offices right through tonight's meeting. As a taxpayer that's footing this bill, I want to find out just how much we're spending on this thing.
I think that it's, will be part of the public record.
I can put it in as a public record request, you'll have less time to respond then, but next meeting is okay if you want to go that route.
I'd like to say, as a taxpayer, I appreciate Dan Hill and what he brings to the table. His job is to protect this town. No, I know you talk to any...
Whoa. Mike?
What's the pleasure of the board on this topic? Don?
I, my first reaction would be, that would be, I mean, the hiring of an attorney who is knowledgeable and specializes in the 40B...
I'm just asking for the bill.
Let me finish, Peter. The hiring of an attorney for a zoning board that has some limited knowledge of all of the things that are required under a comprehensive permit under chapter 40B is certainly a necessity of the town, and the fact that this hearing has gone on for a long period of time, which means there's probably significantly higher attorney fees than on other 40Bs, is maybe more a result of the, maybe the inability or lack of knowledge of the zoning board members, or a lot of public comment. But the attorney fees that we incur to support a good decision by the zoning board to protect the town, I think is, whether or not that's, I know it's public information, but whether or not it's something we have to secure in advance for a meeting, I don't know if that's a reasonable request or not. I guess the easiest way would just simply go to the selectmen and ask them.
Joe?
I can't add to what Don said, I mean, I have to, I basically support what Don said, that, you know, we have an attorney that is very thorough and has been through quite a few of these applications with us, and it does, you know, help us through this process, even though this has been one of the more difficult ones.
Okay, Tim?
The town's very well represented. I have no issue with the hours spent on this, so I'm not inclined to say yes or no, I'm going to be fine with the time spent on it. It's great representation.
Devin?
I don't have any comment, Dan's advice is invaluable, I think.
Okay, Josie?
Well, I mean, there's no doubt about it, we do need an experienced attorney. At the same time, I don't, I mean, I don't know if we could say no to a taxpayer inquiring about a bill.
Mike, are we done with your polling?
I'm trying to get a sense of what everyone feels.
It doesn't matter. All right. It doesn't matter. All right, well, well, let's leave it at this. This is a public record request. It can be done verbally and I'm finished.
Okay, thank you. So Joe, can you make a, um, motion to continue the public hearing to a date and time certain?
Yeah, I just need to, I gotta check with Amy. What's the date and time, Amy, for this motion?
Um.
I mean, can we do it in the next two weeks? What's the next meeting date?
So we have, um, June 24th obviously is the town meeting day, but we did continue, um, a couple of hearings till that just in case as a placeholder. So I don't know if they would take precedence. Our next meeting is July 1st and then July 15th.
What's on the July 1st agenda?
Well, if those two get pushed out, then there would be 144 Seccong and 112 Myrtle Street and, um, 19 Shire is definitely already on that day.
So Mike, the question's gonna be, if we were able to get this in, let's say for July 1st, how do we organize with who goes first? And obviously, we're not trying to drag this out. So I need your, I need your advice on what we do.
Yeah, I, I think we, um, we almost need a night dedicated to this. What's on July 1 again?
The only definite on July 1 right now is 19 Shire or 7, um, Phillips Way, 19 Shire Drive. Um, that's the only definite. And then on June 24th is scheduled 144 Seccong Street and 112 Myrtle Street.
All right, why don't we do, uh, Al first on July 1st? How's that, Joe?
Yeah, I, I think that would be good if we can do that. I mean, obviously, we have to make a motion on those ones that we schedule for the 24th. We'll have to just plan accordingly, but Al should go first on July 1st.
Yes.
Can I just ask a question?
Go, go ahead.
Wha- what's the issue with June 24th? Is there a town meeting that, that night that's scheduled?
Yes.
Is, is it, is there a chance that that may not go forward? Is that why we're?
Dan, the, uh, sorry to interject, the July, June 24th, the town meeting will be held. So the, the only reason we put a place card where was if they did cancel town meeting, but it will be held for the 24th. So we can't do it on the 24th. On July 1, July 1, we said we would dedicate to 144. So I don't think you can do this on July 1 because you, you already have 144, you already have Myrtle Street and you already have 19 Shire Drive. I think you'd, uh, as we discussed with this hearing is, we want to give each one their own, their own time slot and not have multiple 40Bs on the same night.
Well, then, then the hard, the hard question's gonna be, can we find another date between now and July 1st?
Correct.
What's, what's, what's the significance of July 1st? Why, why does this have to be done before then?
Well, this will be pushing it out more than, would be almost another month. We don't, I mean, at least, we're trying not to push this out too far. Right, so. I mean, it's already the 17th of June, right? So. I mean, will, will we be ready for another meeting?
When you close a public hearing, you, you have 40 days to, to issue a decision. And I'm not saying you have to do that, but just so you understand what the law says, you don't, you don't actually have to have another meeting on this in, in two weeks.
Right, but we are, we, we agreed not to close this hearing, but yet we don't want to wait too long to get to that next meeting.
And Dan, is there even a time period right now?
No.
I'm, I'm not saying that we would, we would even, you know, I'm not saying we would wait that long, but there really, I don't think is a time period right now.
No, there isn't. And you, you are correct, Devin, that, that at, at this stage, no board has to hold any hearings on, on, on any application and they, they don't have to until 45 days after the state of emergency has been lifted. But, yeah, so I, I, I think, you know, Seccong's actually been waiting for a meeting and I, I think it would be unfair to bump them on July 1st and, and that's gonna be a busy night. We have a lot to talk about on that decision.
I- is there any time next week that the board might be able to, to meet? Well, next week is the town meeting. Other than Wednesday? Yeah.
I am at, uh, I, I'm personally have nothing next week, so.
I guess, we need to know what the board feels about that. I mean, I, I like to make myself as flexible as possible, but that's just me and Devin so far.
I'm, I'm, I'm available the 23rd or 25th.
I think, I think it's really, for me, it's just up to whether or not, uh, at this point, I think it's just Jamie and Dan who, as well as just a couple of clarifications from Wade that we need. Unless I'm mistaken.
Can Jamie and Dan, is, is the 25th work for you two?
25th, Thursday night, I can do that.
Okay.
No danger of the town meeting going an extra night, guys? Just checking.
I'm highly unlikely, Joe.
Okay, good. All right, so I, I, I'm personally in favor of the 25th if we can manage it as, as a board.
Do we have enough time for a notice, Amy?
We don't need a notice to continue it.
Okay, Joe.
I make a motion, I make a motion, we move the, we continue the hearing to the 25th of June at 7:00 PM. 194 Main Street.
Via Zoom.
Via Zoom. Anybody second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, yeah, I just, I, this is Don. I have this discussion. Can we then, uh, limit the meeting on the 25th to just 194 Main Street?
That would be the plan right now, yes, right?
But I'm, I'm, I'm asking, I guess I'm asking, yeah, Amy, okay? And, or Chris, if other things come up, can we still just limit it, the meeting on the 25th to 194? Can we agree to that?
I'm almost done with this meeting.
Is that, is this a hard question, guys? Can we agree?
I'm okay with that. I'm waiting for Amy or Mike to say okay.
Not up to me.
There, there's nothing.
There's nothing, there's nothing pending, Don. You couldn't, you couldn't schedule another item for next week's meeting. We already have, we already got the agenda set for anything that's open in the town regarding zoning. So this would be the only thing on your agenda.
Okay, good.
We have, so we have the motion, we have the second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. All right. Chris, I'll turn the gap over to you.
Okay, why don't you guys take a one-minute recess and then we'll, uh.
Can I say one thing?
For Amy.
I need an extension. I need extension letters from Michael Shaughnessy.
Uh, I, I'll send another one over tomorrow, the next day, Amy. That's fine.
Thank you.
All right, so why don't we take a one-minute recess or two-minute recess and then we'll reconvene with the zoning board of appeals meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
How's it going, Don?
Good. We're making progress.
Slow but sure.
So will we have another hearing?
No, we just have a minute.
I know, I just trying to be funny.
That wasn't funny, Joe.
Yeah, come on, Joe.
No.
We're gonna do a Abbeyville, Joe.
Oh, my God. It, it just seems like, it just seems like all these zoning meetings are on days I seem to be sitting at a desk for like 12 hours before we sit for these meetings.
Hey, Rich. Uh, uh, do I, do I have to have my appeal reheard for, uh, 6 Hill Street by the ZBA?
What? What do you mean here?
For the F-11. I appealed the F-11 on, uh, on 6 Hill Street. And I was told that it was rescinded and, uh, and so I withdrew the ZBA appeal. But if it wasn't rescinded, then I would like to have my appeal hearing. I paid $300 for it.
The, that F-11, the F-11 wasn't rescinded?
It wasn't.
No.
So then why, why did my, uh, appeal of, of the F-11? Why was I asked to res, to withdraw my appeal of the F-11?
You were asked to withdraw the F-11 because, uh, Nat filed for site plan review with the planning board.
Yeah, but, but if the F-11 was still, uh, a legal, uh, document and I, I was appealing it, why would I ever withdraw my appeal? If the F-11 was still there? I mean, I, I made an appeal of the F-11. And I, I feel like it was withdrawn on false pretense that the F-11 was rescinded. That's what I was told.
No, the F-11 wasn't rescinded. The, the F-11 stayed as it was issued by Bob. The, uh, Nat, sorry. Agreed that the scope and change of the project that he need to go through site plan approval, which is before the planning board right now. He, he had, um, special permit requests that were before the board of appeals that he withdrew without prejudice, but nothing related to F-11 or site plan. So it wasn't.
I'd like my, I'd like my appeal restated. I'd like my hearing.
I think, I don't think you could do that at this point. You. Well, you withdrew without prejudice, didn't you? The appeal? So it was, it's already been finished.
Hasn't. Was the F-11 ever stamped in at the clerk's office?
The original one from Mark?
You have 30 days to appeal an F-11. And by law, it had, the F-11 by the building inspector has to be stamped in at the clerk's office for that 30-day clock to tick.
What, what does it say that? I mean, the F-11.
That's MGL. That's Massachusetts general law.
So F-11 is a site plan approval that's a, it's a bylaw of the town Norfolk.
Any, any document where there's a 30-day limit for an appeal? Where someone has appellate rights? The document has to be stamped in at the clerk's office, so it's timestamped. If it's not timestamped, then the 30 days hasn't started.
I'm kind of out on, I'm out on a rail here to, I'm just, to know.
But I, I don't understa- I, I don't understand the position, first of all, on that you're taking that, uh, that I withdrew, uh, with, uh, without prejudice. I, I withdrew because I was told the F-11 was rescinded. So. I think, uh, I think we need to get to the bottom of that. Why, why would I have ever dropped the F-11 appeal if that applicant was able to use that F-11 to gain occupancy?
I think, I think there's a conversation for another day. I think.
I just thought we were in a, a place time here before the meeting.
Rich, we have a discussion.
Thank you.
All right. All right, welcome back to the zoning board of appeals meeting. It is now 10:07. Um, has everyone had a chance to review the, um, we'll be looking at minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review the March 18 minutes yet?
It was, it was quite long, wasn't it? It was quite long and in depth, wasn't it?
I'm, I'm hoping everybody had a chance to review it. If they did, could I get a motion to approve the March 18, uh, 2020 minutes?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of, uh, March 18th.
We have a second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a chance to review the May 6, 2020 minute, meeting minutes. If so, could I get a motion to approve?
Just checking one thing, Chris, hold on.
Yeah, me too.
These are the May 6 meeting minutes.
Right.
Yeah, that, I didn't see anything in there. I think there might be one typo in there that I wanted to comment on, but it's otherwise, I don't see anything. You mean, is it worth mentioning just the one typo on page three, just the sidewalk spelling?
Sure.
It's on the middle of page three, just the word sidewalk. Sidewalk has been extended.
You got, you got that, Amy? You're on mute, Amy, but okay.
Yeah, so otherwise, otherwise I'd make a motion that we would, with, as amended, make a motion that we, uh, accept the minutes for May 6th.
Sam? Anyone?
Okay.
Any further discussion? May 6 meeting minutes as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, the May 20th, 2020 minutes, again, has everybody had a chance to review those? Those are a little bit more detailed.
I did add the plans and fix a couple of typos since I sent that over.
Given on page two of the May 20th minutes. Let's see, the third full paragraph, it says, "It was clarified that the homeowners would be allowed to rent out their unit, but the whole development would never be converted to homeownership." It might have meant to say to rental.
I absolutely did. Thank you.
Anything further?
Nice catch, Tim. Uh, I was gonna just mention, there's one point, and maybe this was already corrected, or it says plans presented and referred to were entitled and says Philip Cherry dated 2/11/20. Is that correct?
No, that, that's changed. I put all the correct, um, nomenclature in there.
Okay.
I can send you a copy of it before you sign it.
Of course, yeah, but otherwise, that would, that sounds like you've got everything.
Yeah.
You even have like the street address for Karen Clark and all that stuff is correct?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm 30.
Amy, did you send the revised version out to everybody today?
I'm not sure if I did. It was late.
I know I got.
I'll do that tonight.
All right, yeah, she had sent a revised version out, Joe.
Okay, well, I make a motion as amended, uh, that we accept the minutes for 5/20/2020, uh, 2020.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. And.
You froze, Chris.
We didn't hear what you just said, Chris.
If you, the two third meeting minutes, we don't have those, correct?
That is true.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so that's all we have. Any, uh, anybody else have anything for this evening? Mike? You're on mute, Mike. You're still on mute. Good, Tim? All set.
Chris, nothing further to discuss on Boardman Street or anything, uh, previous decisions?
Nothing yet. We're waiting. I think, uh, Rich, I don't know if, I don't think, I don't know if you want to update the board on that right now? Any unanticipated news on that with regard to Boardman Street?
I really, it's, you know, pending litigation, so I don't really wanna, it's not. I, I really, it's, you know, pending litigation, so I don't really want to, it's not on the agenda, but get into, but I, I think it should be resolved easily.
Okay, I, I'm not forcing an update. Wanted to know if, you know, we'll be told when it's time to discuss it? If, or?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes.
Okay, I'm good, I just have it as an open item on my little note. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Don, anything else?
Nothing for me.
Okay, Devin?
All set.
Okay. Hearing none then, I asked for a motion to close. Uh, Amy, you got anything else? Amy? Okay.
So I make a motion?
Go ahead, Joe.
I know, so I make a motion that we close the hearing for June 17th at 10:13 PM.
We have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Very good. Everyone, have a good evening.
You too.
Thanks, Amy.